I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Shaftesbury Select Board for February 4th, This is the first regular meeting of February and Carl can't be with us tonight. He's traveling on family business. So announcements, Margie?
None.
Billy?
None.
Craig?
No.
Karen?
Nope.
Okay, I did want to make the announcement that we have received a resignation from Jennifer Veerick, who was an alternate to the Development Review Board. And later on tonight, under other business, we're just going to talk about what process, if any, we're going to go through prior to town meeting for appointment of another alternate. We've just been through an appointment process, so we still have people whose applications and interviews are so fresh that, you know, one option may be to talk about an appointment from that group or to defer because we'll have at least one, we'll have one new Select Board member, and so it could be taken up then as well. Okay. Does anyone present want to comment on anything that does not appear on the agenda? Okay. Conflict of interest, does any member of the Select Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. Let's see. The first item is the Planning Commission. Is Chris here? Oh, great. Do you want to join us?
Actually, there's three of them. We have Chris, Bill, and Norm.
Bill and Norm, could you come up too, maybe, since we didn't pull up three chairs, maybe right in the front row? That'd be great. Chris Williams is the chair.
I've got so much chair.
Okay.
Margie, there's one.
Grab some chairs here. Pull them around.
Is this okay?
Thank you, Tom.
Hey, what a guy.
We have new mics from Cat TV and apparently our PA system is not working, so for the benefit of the crowd, as loud as you can make it, reasonably.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have three different things to talk about tonight.
It's David.
Okay. Hi, David, come on up. Tom, do you mind grabbing one more chair?
Have you volunteered into this already? I thought I was early or late or whatever.
You're right on time.
You're late, David.
That means you're right on time, I've heard him say it.
Isn't Tom Coughlin the football coach who finds somebody for being five minutes early, telling them you should have been there 10 minutes early?
Yeah.
So we've got three different items. Every five years by statute Shaftesbury is required to make current its town plan. The only, we're only allowed to have zoning bylaws if we have a current town plan, and so it has to be reviewed, revised, and subject to public hearings by the Planning Commission and by the Select Board. And it's a very long process because it's a very detailed document. It's probably as long or longer than the Town Report, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. We have some bylaw revisions that the Planning Commission's been working on, and we've been talking about some, changing the boundaries for some of the, or changing the zoning for some of the areas in the community, as opposed to actually changing-
The village.
Changing the districts where the boundaries are the same, but we may be changing the zone.
Well, when we get to that, it's a little more complicated.
Okay. So Chris, do you want to walk us through what we need to, what we're working on?
Okay, well, we should come to you first and foremost to solicit your opinions in the whole next year about the town plan revision. And we felt that when we did it four years ago, we didn't get as much community input as we would have liked. This is the vision statement for the community. It has limited legal application, but it has some, and it also is referred to by the DRB and the Planning Commission in terms of goals that are laid out. And there should be a dovetailing of the zoning bylaws with the town plan, and that items that are laid out as goals, recommendations that are desirable, directions for the town to move in should eventually be reflected in zoning bylaws. And so we're trying to focus on aligning those things as much as possible, but first and foremost, we want to get your input, so.
One of the, one of the things that people often say is, well, how can they do this in this zone or that in that zone? It's inconsistent with the town plan. And the town plan has, it will state inconsistent priorities, because on the one hand, it will say, "We want to promote industry and business," and on the other hand, it will say, "We want to promote open space." And some people think automatically those are in conflict. They're not always, but that's the way-
They can be.
-people interpret them or use them in an argument when they want to win one side of the argument or the other. The significance, from my perspective, is the town plan's the foundation on which the bylaws can be built. And so if the town plan doesn't speak to an issue, then it can be hard to develop a zoning bylaw because there's no basis for it. So I think the town plan gives us the opportunity to affect what the bylaws are going to look like. For example, one of the things we talked about five years ago was preserving diversity in Shaftesbury. But the bylaws don't provide, the zoning bylaws don't provide a mechanism for doing that because right now in agricultural spaces, it's pretty easy to do subdivisions of land and make a bunch of 10-acre or 1-acre residential lots, and then a lot of the open space will disappear. So if we like the diversity of the community and we're serious about trying to preserve some of the farm agricultural land, some of the forest land, as well as have meaningful development of some new housing, of maintaining the historic stock and all that, then, you know, right now the town plan doesn't create any way to protect that sort of diversity. At least the zoning bylaws don't, but if the town plan created a foundation for that, then maybe we could take a hard look at the zoning bylaws as a tool for trying to preserve some of the open space that we have with reasonable development in other areas. So that's one. The second one is an issue, I apologize for jumping in first, but- Oh, well.
Go on, say it, Lon.
It's my nature. The other thing is that I'm concerned about the composting requirement because not immediately, but within six years, the town has to have some sort of facility for composting residential waste. I think it's 2020 or 2021, somewhere in that ballpark. And while there was some conversation of that before the Select Board, it was very Some of the information said was not correct in that 2014 is when big industrial facilities are subjected some composting requirements, but not what our town would be having to deal with. And I don't know to what extent our current composting bylaws have prepared us for what we'll have to have in place in six years to deal with the community's-
Well, am I correct in saying that the rules for this are still being written in the legislature?
Well, they don't write the rules. They'll-
Or the implementation.
The implementation would be written by the agency.
Right. But isn't that ongoing at this point?
It is, and so we're not going to be sure what it looks like. But if we consider the amount of waste, you know, 3,800 people generate in 1,800 homes, we have no capacity right now. Now, if the plan was there'll be a commercial facility close enough by in a neighboring community that can handle our waste, well, you know, fine, we can collaborate, you know. Regional solid waste made more sense than every town having its own solid waste facility. But those are the kind of questions that we could address in the town plan as a way of saying, "In the next five years, this is how we're going to tackle that issue." So that's another one. And the last one is, I don't know to what extent the bylaws are generous for renewable energy, either wind or solar, and how easy it is to facilitate getting those sorts of things approved by private individuals.
Well, it's not as clear as it might be.
Yeah. And so it seems to me, it's, some of those things are fairly expensive, but because more people are doing them, they're becoming more and more affordable, and then trying to facilitate that so people, so the zoning bylaws encourage it rather than make it an additional hurdle.
Well, one issue in that regard that's been discussed at the commission is the idea of holding property owners harmless for tax increases based on renewable energy. Would the Select Board support an approach like that?
We would definitely want to talk about it. It may be a community, I mean, the board could decide, oh, should we decide or should this be a community decision, and make it a ballot article and a policy of the town. But that's the kind of discussion we could have after we got input from the Planning Commission on where we should go with this issue and what the hurdles are in the bylaws, and then we can talk with the listers about the valuation issue and, you know, maybe we take it to the voters and say, "Do you want this not considered when the listers value your property for grand list purposes?"
All right. Well, it's not a straightforward, clear-cut issue, so that, you know, issues like if you add insulation to your building and you do air sealing, none of that is visible to the naked eye. It's not as if you have a rack of solar panels out in your yard. So, you know, how to define it would be pretty tricky.
In Brattleboro, there is a house where they've got three layers of panels in front of this old Victorian house. Now, the aesthetic isn't great, these big black things just sort of sitting, and it's set way back and looks like it's a beautiful old home. And it's in an older part of the town, so there are lots of these older houses. So one person might say, "Oh, they just screwed up the aesthetic," where somebody else would say, "Oh, isn't this great? You know, they're adding power rather than taking power."
Okay. Well, there's an energy section to the town plan, so when we get to that, I think that's a discussion that's worth having.
Okay. Those are my, that's what little I have to offer.
Okay, great.
Karen?
I wasn't quite ready, honestly, to-
Okay.
-to do that, to do what you just did.
Well, we have a whole year.
[laughing]
And it will come to you at the end.
Yes, it will.
What, should we take up the question about who's involved in the writing, or do you want to?
Well, we discussed that at our last meeting. There were various ideas put forward, and it was all just based on trying to get the widest possible public input.
Okay.
And it was decided at the Planning Commission level not to create any additional institutions because we felt that if we ran interesting meetings, that could be enough to draw the public in.
That makes a lot of sense.
And so no additions to the Planning Commission, no advisory committee. We said, "We'll take the onus to make it topical."
Okay, great. Craig?
As open as possible.
Right. Right, and to encourage people to come in and-
To listen to them when they do.
Yeah.
And if we could get every seat filled for every meeting, that makes our job so much easier to hear what the public wants, so that when it comes in front of you, regardless of what it is that we're discussing on the day, that when it comes to you, you already know you have the public's back, and very little changes, if any. And then you don't have as much contention when it comes to you.
Okay.
That, hitting that topic exactly, when we were involved in this the last go-around, we had exactly the opposite of that. We didn't have a lot of feedback coming in, and then at the 11th hour, when it was crunch time, so to speak, we did get a lot of feedback, good feedback, but it would have been much more helpful and much less stressful for all parties involved had it come during the year-long process, not the last two or three weeks.
What he's hitting at, just for the public, is if we don't have it passed on time, we have no bylaws. We have no zoning bylaws. So we're under a deadline to have a vote and have a revised town plan by a certain date, or there's-
Next year's town meeting.
Right. Or there's a penalty, which is there's no DRB, there's no zoning, there's no nothing. So they're not, you know, we don't make this stuff up, somebody else did. So when you get a big uproar a month before town meeting about this or that, there's not a lot of time to rewrite and have two public meetings within the times required, so. Yep?
I have two concerns, and one might be that we try to just put our heads together, not necessarily right this second, but on thinking outside the box a little on how we go about getting public input, because if we're not getting people out to evening meetings, maybe we can do a few community charrettes or something in different locales and different places in town. Why not have neighborhood potlucks or something where we, you know, do smaller gatherings? But I'm, authorship and who is writing concerns me the most. And then I know the planning commissioners are so, you take this on an awful lot on your own shoulders as far as writing bylaws, and I'm wondering whether we could, since we do pay our membership dues to the RPC, whether, I don't know what your past experience has been, but to have them stand by-
They've supported us. They've done a great job in supporting us. I can't say enough good things about the Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And in, you know, on February 26th, they will appear at the Planning Commission meeting. I've asked them to mine all the statistical data from the 2010 census, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, whatever sources they use, what is it, the UVM Center for Rural Studies, which maintains a lot of statistical databases. And they'll come in here with great information. Plus, they do wonderful maps that support our work. So we feel like we get great support from them.
Who did the writing last time?
Writing? Well, we talked about that at our last meeting, and we're going to take it chapter by chapter and see how it goes, and whether we need one common author or whether we can have multiple authors, we're not sure.
Tying to what Chris said the last time, when we tag teamed it individually and collectively, along with outside support from the Regional Planning Commission, we got some, I believe that we incorporated some water quality stuff in the last go-around, if I remember, which came from an outside resource tied to the Regional Planning Commission. The other thing that they also have been very good is that they also, they do like a final read for us after we did it, when we kind of had our final draft. Their resources went back through it and made sure that we hadn't run amok. So while I'm not sure it answers your question entirely, we have, the resources that they provide in particular, coupled with the Planning Commission members, provides a pretty thorough base for grammatical as well as, you know, substantive information, so.
Okay. Craig, was, I'm sorry, was there other things that you wanted to see addressed in the town plan?
You kind of hit on a couple that were kind of in my mind, just in general, you know, with the upcoming changes, the recycling rules that are coming down the pipe, some things like that. Other than that, you know, more, you know, as we work through it, I plan to throw in my two cents, whether you want them or not, as we work through the process.
We want the input.
To address your reaching to the public, and we discussed it in the last meeting, and we're very much open to receiving letters, notes, emails, people coming in and sitting in at our meetings. We don't have to have them physically in the room. If they drop something off with you, and if we receive it, we'll definitely discuss it and bring it to the table, whatever it is that their question and concerns or comments are.
Okay. Billy?
Just two things I'd bring up. One, in regards to reaching to the public. One thing that I've noticed in my time here in Vermont is that it's amazing how many people read the newspaper. So perhaps even, you know, a short letter to the editor asking people to participate in the process might grab some attention, you know, for free.
And that's come up in a couple other areas that we've discussed as a planning commission, and we've asked that minutes, or not the minutes so much, but announcements as to what we're planning to discuss hits the newspaper, because I know where I live, it's a long drive to the post office-
Mm-hmm.
...to go look on the wall that I'm not going to even go look at because I get the mail at the end of the driveway.
Yep.
So that's been in discussion. I don't know what it's, to what extent it's happened.
And then the only issue with the plan itself that nobody's brought up has to do with, when we talk about growth of the town, one thing that I've seen, you know, originally being from New York, that I saw as a problem in New York and quite a few different municipalities is that, much like the way our municipalities are broken up here, the town is one side and the schools are another. So the town's planned growth based upon what the town thinks it can handle, but there's not a communication with the school system at all. And what I saw in quite a few communities in New York is that we had towns and villages that experienced some tremendous growth, and then what happened was you had more kids in the school system, filled the schools beyond capacity, created a need for additions, additional schools, whatever the case may be. The growth was sustained, a bond issue went before the community, communities approved them because they had 30 kids in a classroom and they didn't know what else to do. And then once that bond came due, everybody's taxes increased with it, and people said, "Oh, my gosh, I can't afford to live in this town anymore," and they started moving out. The enrollments in the schools went down. And Chris, I could list off towns I've seen this in, but the enrollments in the schools went down, and now all of a sudden you had the higher taxes to pay for these facilities that were built, but you no longer had the need for the facilities. So I think looking at what I've seen in Orange and Westchester Counties, you know, I would like to see us just kind of learn from their mistakes a little bit and say, you know, "How can we incorporate this?" And I don't think we're at the point right now that in the next five or 10 years we'll have that issue, but if we're thinking about that issue now, hopefully in 20 or 30 years, we're not faced with the same issue. So I don't know, I guess what I'm ultimately getting at is if there's any way, as we look at long-term growth, to incorporate how we communicate the capabilities of the educational systems in the community, that would probably be a good thing.
Well, to talk to your issue, Bill, you know, at the last Planning Commission meeting, what we discussed, and this is something that is stated in a lot of areas of the town plan, which reflects 10 or 15 years ago, is how the town should react to development pressure. However, there is no development pressure, and that, you know, in the last census, Shaftesbury lost 177 people. Now, something that you bring up, the school population is on the rise, and it's not completely clear why this is happening. So this is something we need to dig into a little bit further. But the crux of the discussion was more around the idea of, well, how should a community react to a period of no growth? What, you know, I mean, this is almost like a nightmare in the American psyche, no growth. You know, America is predicated upon growth, but growth has a lot of negatives to it as well. So one way to think about this is equilibrium, which is kind of a neutral term. Say, "Well, we're not growing, we're not shrinking, we're kind of sitting there." Well, this has been true for many decades of Vermont's history, and much of this is remembered fondly as the good old days. And so I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing, and I probably have no control over any of it, so, you know, but it would be good to kind of base policy on the idea that we may be in a period of very limited growth, that our population is increasing, our employment opportunities do seem to be increasing over the last period of the town plan, five years, with the opening of the Peckham Precast Plant. So, you know, it's not completely static, but this is something that we need to quantify a little bit more in our thinking about, you know. So the situation you raised with the schools, I always felt that, being a former school board member, that the dichotomy between the town government and the school government is almost unconscionable, and it doesn't reflect the realities of the 21st century, but it reflects a colonial era of Vermont that divided it this way. Now, if you look on the town website, there's no mention that we even have a school, you know. It's not, the school is not in there.
Quite true, Chris.
Well, okay, there's a picture of the school building, but that's about it.
They certainly reference the town plan.
There is a tab that says "schools" on the left-hand side.
Okay, but there's a reason for that. That's not, that's not a mistake. The two schools, first, Shaftesbury has two schools, not one. Not everybody is served by this elementary school on Buck Hill, okay? The second is that because it's not a town-school district, it's a separate municipality. It's run by a school board, that it's its own government. It raises its own taxes, it sets its own policies. It's not subject to any governance by the-
We're talking about District 1 here, Lon?
We're talking about both school districts.
Yeah, I used to be on that board.
Right. Well, right, it's totally separate from this town government.
I understand the legality of it, but, you know, in actual fact, it's one town. I understand the legal niceties, but it's one town, and-
It is in terms of the town government, it's not in terms of school government.
Understand. Understand. But, you know, it sets up a real disconnect. And I mean, you know, look...
It is disconnected.
This has worked for a long time, it sorta works, but, you know, this is the situation that we face on the ground, but, you know, the idea that the town government somehow doesn't incorporate the school seems kind of, you know...
The town government doesn't. The town as a populace does. But let me take your point one step further, which is that one of the school boards is bound and determined to close that school. And, so Shaftesbury residents, some Shaftesbury residents are gonna be in a school district with no school.
No public school.
Nope, no school.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah.
All right. And they are then gonna have to decide where to send their kids. We already know that the proposed private school, the village school, is not gonna be certified to do special education for all 12 areas of special education, that the public school must provide. And so Shaftesbury kids who have special education needs are gonna have to go someplace else. And no plan for that has been made by the North Bennington Prudential Committee. They just say, "Well, we're looking into it." But that leaves open an area for which, you know, there has been completely inadequate planning. And, you know, one of the questions should be, I think for a town plan is, is this the way we should be providing education for kids in the town of Shaftesbury?
Okay. And your thought about the remedy?
Well, in 1970, oh, is it '77 or '79? The North Bennington School District was changed to include a portion of Shaftesbury. So it may be that that district boundary no longer works for the town of Shaftesbury. And the district boundary can be changed by a vote of the two communities. So, you know, one of the questions is, if we're looking, if you're correct, that we should look at all aspects and not just political boundaries, but we should look at the town as a whole, then one of the questions is, is having the town of Shaftesbury split up into two school districts, one with a school and one without, appropriate for the town of Shaftesbury?
Okay, great question, great question.
Okay. Anything further from the select board on the town plan? Anything else you want from us?
No, this is all wonderful input. We'll dig right into these questions, and you'll see it come back in the town plan in some form.
Yeah.
And so, thank you for your input.
Okay.
Could we ask, maybe just, and again, in real short terms, you know, maybe a few months out, just one paragraph update on interesting stuff that might have, that might have transpired, you know, kind of a...
Sure, periodic updates.
Yeah.
Sure, sounds reasonable, sounds important.
And again, keep it simple.
Yes, sir. Okay, we will do that.
I'd like to invite you guys to our meetings, anytime and every time you wanna show up.
Okay, well, thanks.
And not just for the plan, not just for this, but any and all meetings.
And I do think your idea of getting the announcement in the paper, whether it's Tyler or Margie, that should be announced. This February 22nd one coming up with the BRC there, you know?
That's been discussed many times, many being two, three, or four at least, over the last year to 18 months.
Yep.
I don't know to what extent it has happened or not.
Well, I mean, isn't it just, Tyler is producing the agendas with Chris. I mean, it's a matter of sending it to the banner, I would think. Margie, the way you send ours...
Correct.
...to the banner, so...
Is that not happening?
I thought that the warnings were automatically sent to them.
Not the warnings, the general meetings.
No, the warnings for the meetings.
When he produces your agenda, I mean, Margie sends ours to, I don't know if his are...
We have the same at the bottom.
You do.
Yeah, maybe, but just check with Tyler to see if...
I'll do that.
Yeah, you might have a connection.
Being in the banner is more important than being posted at the North Bennington Post Office.
That's right.
As far as from getting it out to the community.
I would strongly suggest, you know, once again, a letter asking people to come in because, especially with the online version of the banner becoming more and more popular, those announcements online are not as easy to find as they are in the paper, but the letters show up right on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, so people will see that easily, and you'll hit people on both sides.
I think that's a good idea. I'll do that, Bill.
All right, thanks, Chris.
The bylaw revisions, okay, which ones, you probably have a list.
Right. Well, we, our focus this round, and you will be getting this soon enough because we have a public hearing on February 26th, at which point, if there are no major changes, it'll come to you, really involve the village of South Shaftesbury. And a theme that runs through the town plan, and Craig can vouch for this, having been at work on the last revision of the town plan, is that development should be concentrated in the village center. And what we actually see from DRB agendas over my period serving on the commission is that even though there's very little building going on in the town, there's an endless wave of subdivision of property going on, and that our rural landscape, because it's zoned at such a low level, RR40, less than one acre lots, is being sliced and diced into increasingly small pieces, even in pretty rural areas. And so, in the last go-round of the town plan revision, we kind of grappled with this issue about concentrating growth in the village center. And we started to dig in and see, well, when were the last houses built, when were the last permits issued for new buildings in the village center? And we couldn't find any. And so, following that, we conducted a lot-by-lot survey of South Shaftesbury Village, Craig and I on mountain bikes with a map, and...
That's not an exaggeration. Fortunately, we're mountain bikes on the pavement, but, you know...
We only found, I think, eight lots. I still have the survey document at home, and that were, that appeared suitable for development of residential property, and none of them were for sale, and nobody could remember when the last residential house had been built in the village center. And so we said, "Well, let's look at how we might make this attractive," that...
Can I interject for a second?
Certainly.
There's a section of the village behind the T&amp;M factory, more or less. There's 15 or 20 acres in there, and you go, "Well, what can't you build in there?" Swamp, river, steep banks, all of which don't allow any sort of residential building.
Right. Well, you know, we describe it in terms of the number of available lots, not the acreage, because this lot that David's referring to is about 20 acres, but it was our judgment based on superficial evaluation that you couldn't build on any of it. So, we're proposing options to expand the village residential core, but what has changed in the meantime is the state septic regulations. And so after much debate at the planning commission about what minimum lot size should be, presently being 10,000 square feet or a little less than a quarter of an acre, we find that with current septic regulations, a half an acre is the minimum lot size. We can't, we can't do that quarter acre zoning anymore. It doesn't allow for replacement septic fields and the necessary well-isolation distances. Much of this stuff was built before there was even zoning or septic regulations, so this is the 21st century version. So what we're proposing is to create a village residential 2 district, a new zoning district that would be based on half an acre zoning, provided you can connect to public water, and there is surplus capacity for about 30 additional residences by all reports, and...
On the water system.
On the water system.
On the current water system.
Right. So...
In addition to that, we did discuss going with a smaller lot, the 10,000 or so square foot, instead of half acre, quarter acre, but that would require full septic and full water.
It would require municipal sewer.
Municipal sewer.
Well, we're basing our thinking on the fact, on the idea that that's a ways off. So, anyway, here's a map provided by Bennington Regional Commission that reflects our thinking, and you'll see that the present core of the village residential with the commercial on 7A, and this represents just a shade under 200 acres. We've got three areas that we list as options. It's a little bit arbitrary because you combine the options. They're all about 50 acres, and they're all immediately adjacent to the present core, and so you would have this piece, which is from Howard Park down to the Preston's Village, it's served by sidewalks, municipal water system is close by. This piece, which is partly the Lear property and the Howard property, adjacent to the water plant. We've walked it, it's overgrown and pucker brush, but it's very believable for residential development, and it would combine well with the Preston's Village. And then, the third option is up, is a continuation of Tootsfield Hill Road. There is town water in that area for most of that. There is development going on in that area presently. The negative of this piece is that it doesn't connect to the village very well. This is kind of, you're gonna get in your car for anything. These pieces, in my opinion, have the advantage of being connected potentially by streets and sidewalks, kids riding their bikes to school, people walking to town institutions, the country stores, so on. So, but the planning commission couldn't agree on which ones were the most desirable, so we're gonna toss this to you and say, "What do you think, A, B, or C, or all of the above, or some?"
Okay. So, it sounds like you wanna take that up after town meeting.
We wanna take that up as part of bylaw revisions, and we have written a section on the new VR2 zoning based on 20,000 square foot lots in connection to public water.
Okay, but I'm just thinking about the timing. We've got two more meetings.
Oh, no, this won't be rare.
Okay, so we're looking at...
We're gonna have a public hearing on, at the end of February, and then you have to have a public hearing, so that's past town meeting.
Right, okay.
Public hearing on which? Just on the proposed district, the new V2 district?
We've got a couple, three things.
All their bylaws, revisions.
Plus, you have some left from the last session.
We do.
Yeah.
Well, just look for the notice, yeah.
Well, some were handed to you, and the only one I'm sure I've got back, I think we've gotten one back from you that we have to schedule a public hearing.
Not back, though. You got that two years ago.
Right. The open space we've had for a while, we sent back signed ordinance and home occupations.
Right. We worked the home occupations, so that'll be coming back. Signed ordinance is in progress, hard to say where that might come out.
Okay, so the one we do have to schedule is the one we've been sitting on?
Yes.
Okay.
If you would.
You mean the open space one?
That's gonna be on our agenda for next Monday night.
Right. Weren't we waiting for some sort of word back from an attorney?
Well, we are.
From our attorney.
But isn't that on tonight's agenda?
It is.
It is, right.
Or at least discussion of...
Right. Well, you know, this is a tricky piece of bylaw, and it's not immediately apparent what the implications of it are.
And then, the third thing we had to, okay, so have you covered both the bylaw revisions and the zoning district boundary changes? This is the...
Boundary changes, and, well, bylaw revisions, there's a separate item for open space subdivisions, right?
Right.
Well, let's move on to that, because, yeah, you'll get another package of bylaw revisions, and then we'll turn our attention solely to the town plan, so there won't be any more coming for a while.
Yeah, okay. The one, the holiday is coming up, I think it's Martin Luther King? No, no, Presidents' weekend, so we'll take it up under other business, but we're gonna plan one special meeting.
Next Monday, the 11th.
The 11th, skip the 18th, and then meet on the 25th right before town meeting.
So this will be on the agenda the 11th?
Yeah, now, do we have to have a public hearing on this item?
Well, we will, but it needs to be on the agenda, or I need direction as to whether, what language we're going to the public hearing with.
Okay.
Because there were so many questions as a result of the last discussions two years ago.
Well, let's talk about the general shape of it and what the questions are.
Well, that's what we'll do at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do, and we're gonna push Rob to get back to us on the questions that we posed him.
Okay, on the email exchange about isolation distances.
Yeah.
I don't see this as peculiar to this particular bylaw, that this is a larger issue that runs across all development in town.
Right.
And so...
It doesn't only have to do with development, Chris, from my view. It has to do with the replacement of any system, because if your existing system fails and you have to move to a new location, you have to get a new permit, and when you get that new permit, that system potentially could push isolation distances onto neighboring properties. And that's where the problem lies.
As I understand it, that's a state policy.
That's a state regulation, and we have no jurisdiction.
Right, but the public interest in it has been whether or not, has been the question of whether or not the bylaws should include something to put abutters on notice that they're affected by these isolation distances. And the statute, state statute was revised so that A&R is supposed to, Agency of Natural Resources, is supposed to be notifying people when the permit applications come in, giving the abutters an opportunity to say, "Hey, wait a second."
Part of the application process that I know the septic designers send up is a complete list of abutters that may potentially be affected or not to both the new, the two new setbacks. One is the well-isolation shield that's always been there for, since whenever, 70s or 80s, and the new one, the septic setback, which is, only difference between the two is, one's, it's the same dimensions, but it's wrapped around the septic field or wrapped around the well, and it basically, as long as they don't touch, the shields can touch, but if the field corner and well doesn't touch, then life is good. If it goes over the property line onto your property or your property, I won't say the state doesn't care, but they, part of their policy is they're supposed to have the secretary take the list that we emailed, and it must be in electronic form, and all they gotta do is post it on their sticky note things and slap it on a letter and send it out, and say that you may be affected. Here's your 11 by 17 drawing that shows how you may be affected. Grieve if you may, but the current policy is first come, per served. So I can encumber your property 110% where you don't have any place to put a house or a well or whatever, but it's first come, per served.
So, my question is, what is the understanding in terms of what local authority is in this issue?
That's what we'll take up.
Well, but does anybody know the answer to that, because I don't? Because I don't.
Some members of the public are gonna speak to it when we actually put it on the agenda. I know Kathy Genislaw has talked about it. A meeting that was on a different topic, but this came up while we were talking about it. It had to do with zoning, and composting, and a bunch of other things. But given that we're running, you know, twenty minutes behind on our public hearing, and since we are gonna take this up at the next meeting, I'd like to, like, get into the nitty gritty of it then, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah. All right.
Sure. So, Chris, except for the open space bylaw, where the select board is on time, so to speak.
That's right.
Except for that one thing, and then we got, we gotta really put that on the front burner.
Right. Because we got another batch coming right at you.
Okay. Yeah. And, right. Okay.
Be prepared.
Yeah, we are. We're Boy Scouts.
All right. Good.
No, no harm. Hey, no harm. No harm intended. Okay.
All right. Good.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Okay.
Kind of.
She's got a copy of that for them.
Well, what I need to do is get the PDF digital file.
Okay. But they should have it, and they can easily refer to it as, and be as familiar with it as we are.
Are you ready for CAS?
Yep. So we are required to have a public presentation on a federally funded project under a transportation enhancement grant, all the way from Beaver Dam, Wisconsin.
Williston, Vermont.
Williston, Vermont. Just kidding. We were talking about where we grew up, which is only a few hundred miles apart. Eric Samblum is here from CAS Engineering. Just to let everybody know what's going on, in order to be eligible for a transportation enhancement grant, the town, can that focus a little bit? The town is required to ask for public feedback. And so unlike a public hearing where we're taking evidence, we're having more of a conversation about the proposed sidewalk and the design and construction of it. Well, not so much the construction, but the design. So Eric, the meeting is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. Like Lon said, I'm Eric Samblum. KES is the company. We're civil engineering and environmental management company. And what this project is, is.
Just a minute. Margie? Bill?
We need, we need to be able to have folks here, Eric. So if you, if there was information you needed downstairs, maybe, you could do that downstairs?
That's okay.
Okay. Thanks. So this is really to complete the block of Route seven A, Church Street, and Cleveland. And I was involved with the work on the west side of Route seven A and around Cleveland years ago, and so this is a nice way to remain involved in the project and finish off this loop. Quick photo credit. I stole that picture from the website, Shaftesbury website. I hope that there's no copyright infringement there. So the purpose of this meeting really is to reintroduce the project. What's it called? It's called a local concerns meeting, but we're going to, you know, solicit feedback from the public to determine if there's any particular things we need to consider in the design, but we're all, you know, it's such a very small project area that we're actually gonna present some alternatives already, because we already know a lot about the project area. The project area is very small. It's basically, it begins at the, where the sidewalk currently ends down on the southern, the southern extent of the project, on the west side of Route seven A, and just extends across primarily this one property here, the truck repair shop, and then across just one private residence here, where it would connect in with the existing sidewalks that are there now. So I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with the project area. There's a lot, I know there's a lot of stuff on your agenda, so I'll, I'll keep the tempo unless, if I'm going too fast, just slow me down. One thing that we need to do is establish a purpose and need statement. Now, I basically took this from a two thousand and two feasibility study, but massively upgraded it so that it's really pertinent to this project. So really, the purpose is to provide enhanced pedestrian safety and access, resolve traffic and pedestrian conflicts, and to complete pedestrian improvements around the Route seven A, Church Street, Cleveland Avenue block. That's the purpose. Complete the link. Need, the project needed to resolve several deficiencies in the project area. Currently, there are no pedestrian improvements in that project area that I just showed you. It's really just wide, open driveway. The primary adjacent property is a truck maintenance facility with wide, unmarked driveway access to Route seven A and Church Street. There's no clear indication of where pedestrians and traffic should go. The project's in the vicinity of the Shaftesbury Elementary School and Town Hall, and there are other destinations in there, the store. And it sees a significant amount of traffic crossing, I should, I should say pedestrian traffic, crossing Route seven A between these activity centers in the residential neighborhood to the west and the south. There's an existing crosswalk painted across Route seven A. It has a clear, you know, tie-in on the east side, but on our west side here, there's, it just kind of opens up into pavement. It's not really a good situation. So there's a ramp on the east end, but no ramp, detectable warning, or other pedestrian facilities on the west side, so.
Eric, could you just explain why having no clearly marked sort of entrance and exit from a commercial facility would prove hazardous either to vehicles or to pedestrians?
Absolutely, yeah. What he's referring to is what we call in the industry, access management. And it's essentially, what the goal is, is to provide clear direction to the pedestrian and to the motorist as to where each should be. And, you know, for instance, there's, you know, with such a large curb cut that's there now, a vehicle can just cross at any location without any regard for, you know, whether or not there might be a pedestrian in that area. There's also no indication of where the pedestrians should be. So there's no sidewalk there now. It's just wide open pavement. And it's pavement that's not in very good condition either. So it's really just to provide defined or actual physical facilities to provide that separation. You can provide vertical separation, but with a curb, or horizontal separation with green space, or, you know, other, you know, wider sidewalk, and things like that. So that's kind of what we're looking at, and we're thinking about what to do. To pretty much sum it up on the purpose and need, if anyone, you know, if the board or if Margie, if you want to forward any comments to that, I'll send this presentation to you as well.
Yeah.
But I just took a stab at it. It's not anything that's super important at this point, because we're not, you know, we have the funding.
Right.
We don't have to keep it going. So we just need to have something to keep track for this little part of the project.
But Eric, do we, do we, does the board need to do a formal motion in a meeting to adopt that?
I think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. The most important thing here is hopefully that we can get some guidance on which alternative to move forward to the conceptual design. So I'm not gonna go through all these details. This is a federally funded, locally managed project that is administered through the Vermont Agency of Transportation. So this is the Vermont Agency of Transportation, local transportation facilities, project development process. It's the process that they have to kind of crank through for all these projects. So a feasibility study was done back in two thousand and two. That's also referred to as scoping planning. So we can kind of say that we're through that. Purpose and need that had been developed, but we're just tweaking it here a little bit now. We can skip some of these steps, thanks to the abbreviated nature, the very, very focused nature of this project. Project alternative investigation, this is being done informally in this case. I'm gonna show you some alternatives here tonight. Preferred alternative endorsement, hopefully we'll have that tonight, or very soon after tonight. Then what we'll do is we'll jump right into the conceptual design. It's referred to as twenty-five percent. I do not, there will not be a public informational meeting to prevent the conceptual design in this project. The state has told us that, you know, we will have a meeting with the town, and will, you know, any key stakeholders will be invited to that, where we present the conceptual design, sitting around a table, as opposed to an environment like this. And then we'll jump into the environmental, that's what NEPA is, the National Environmental Protection Act. And so after we go through the environmental review, which really, because of where this project is, it's pretty much just gonna be stormwater. There's really nothing else that we need to consider on the environmental side. And then architectural and historical, but that's already been reviewed already, as part of the previous projects. Then we get to the next phase of design, make sure that it's in good shape. Then right-of-way, there will be right-of-way issues here. We have private properties adjacent to our project, and we need to consider if any temporary or permanent easements need to be obtained. Then we get to eighty-five percent, and then contract plans. Contract plans are what end up going out to bid for the contractor. And I do believe that we are doing a presentation at that point to present the final design plans to the community.
Right. But we have, this one has a little complication, because part of the project's on a town road, Church Street.
Yes.
Which we have complete say-over.
Yeah.
And the other one is Route seven A, which is a state highway, which we have no say-over whatsoever.
Yes.
And so the state has to weigh in on the design, all to build, what, three hundred feet of sidewalk, or?
About three hundred feet.
Well, we already got the process going. I already have some preliminary comments back from the state, and I'll go over those in just a moment.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm just basically showing this for illustration. It's a lugubrious process, and we just gotta follow it. But fortunately, because it's small, we've done this before, we can anticipate steps. We're doing the best we can. So I'll just go through these real quick. I presume everyone's fairly familiar with the project area. It's right in front of West Mountain Repair there, and this is one of the big, open, just, you know, and there's a few drainage issues there. I took these pictures fairly soon after some rain. You can see that there's some puddles accumulating there. That's not good for traffic or pedestrians. There's this interesting little planter with some facilities that aren't in operation right now, lights and signpost, I guess, and then also some traffic signs. But again, there's really, here's where that, I just got the edge of it here. This, you know, it's a crosswalk that delivers you to nowhere, essentially. And we want to, we want to make that better defined.
That's a good picture of it.
There's, yeah, where it just kind of, it just kind of ends.
So anybody sort of in a hurry, just sort of cuts the corner into the repair shop, the pedestrians are sort of.
Sure. They're probably going right across that driveway.
That's all they do.
You know, again, I mean, they're could, you know, they're operating a business there. They gotta move vehicles around.
Yep.
It's not really a good place for a pedestrian to be, especially a young pedestrian who tends not to be quite as attentive, and, you know, there's a lot of concerns there. That's just another shot. Different, here, okay, now we're looking at the other side. This is on the Church Street side. Similar situation, probably not as big of a traffic issue, but nevertheless, it's not a desirable situation. Sorry, I don't have my remote control here, so I gotta keep talking back. And then, I think it's just off of here. It's after this driveway where we would tie into the existing sidewalk. And that's just another shot from that direction on Church Street, looking up Buck Hill Road. And then this is the other end of our project, where, right now, when we did this sidewalk here, it felt necessary to put a detectable warning there. That's those, those little truncated domes, so that visually impaired people can feel it, and know that you're at a place where there's gonna essentially be a crossing, there's gonna be traffic beyond that point. What we would probably do is eliminate that, if, you know, for the extension of any sidewalk. And then it's a matter of whether or not they should be placed at the commercial driveway opening. They're typically not at a, at just a driveway opening. They're usually for road intersections. But, you know, if it's in the VTранs right-of-way, we have to coordinate with them on what to do, but on the Church Street side, it's pretty much, it can come down to the town's preference. Oh, this, I took this so I could ask a question. I noticed this, this is on, this is on the part of the corner where the store is. And I noticed this, you can see this reddish imprinted surface. Was there at one time a crosswalk, a cross Route seven A, with the fake, you know, the asphalt brick?
Well, I think they just painted it. I mean, I, I don't know if, I think they did that when they did the sidewalk. Does that go, is that on the east side, going north-south?
It is on.
Going across Buck Hill Road?
No, it's on.
Where is that?
It's on the north, northeast corner of the intersection.
Northeast.
Going across seven A. Not going across.
Oh, this red goes across seven A?
Yeah. Yeah. So this is Buck Hill up here, and then this is seven A over here. I was just curious. It's not, it's not very pertinent to this project, but I just want to get a feel for the history, and what's been there before, and, you know, maybe what people are used to, but apparently it's been.
So it was actually going across seven A and not across Buck Hill?
That's what it looked like, yeah.
Hmm. Okay. Well, yeah, I guess my recollection was that we had one that went across Buck Hill.
Okay.
That may have been paved over.
Okay. All right. Well, I just threw that in there, so I would remember to ask the question.
Yep.
Okay. So that's, that's the project. That's what we're, what we're dealing with here. We have had a kickoff meeting, got great information from the town and from the sidewalk committee, and I've also had conversations with Trevor Mance. He's the owner of that corner property there. He's our probably most significant adjacent property owner. So we've gathered all this information to kind of think up a few alternatives. And I've got some printouts here, too, just, because it's kind of hard to see up there. And do we need five here?
Now, are you passing out copies of the slides?
Right now, it's just the drawings.
Okay. The drawings, yeah. I had this very little size, so that it'll be easier to see the bigger size.
So I only made twenty copies, so I've got fifteen.
That's fine.
Okay.
Can circulate those.
You just want to take one if you want, or pass it along? All right. So this is what we're calling, well, there's basically three alternatives. It's slightly varied. So I'll just walk, walk through it real quick here. So start it where the existing sidewalk ends on Route seven A, extending that sidewalk. Now, this is a, this would be an elevated sidewalk, so we're talking about a curb here, and then coming to a commercial driveway access. And right here, a curb would wrap around, and there'd be a small green space on the left side, on the, on the driveway side, on the property side. Then a fifty-foot commercial driveway opening. Now, the VTранs minimum is forty feet, I'm sorry, maximum is forty feet. But, I'll put in another slide here, just that we've been thinking about truck turning movements and how to maneuver, knowing that this is a facility that works on full-size tractor-trailers, to make sure that it could make that maneuver, make that motion. And we're talking coming out here, coming down, you know, being able to make this turn without coming into, you know, traffic, and then even, you know, then being able to turn back in, you know, so it's, consider southbound, northbound, and then, you know, coming out this way here. There's no way to do it with forty feet. It just will not work. The truck can't do it.
They're gonna go over the curb anyway, if, if you made it forty feet.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. Now, we've already talked to the VTранs, and they've said, you know, yeah, they'll work with us here. You know, anything we do, we're making it better than what it is now. And so they understand that it might not be possible to completely meet their, their requirements. So that's why we're going, is that an alternative? You have a question?
Can I ask questions?
Yeah.
Is it necessary for a car to come from Church Street, make that turn, and then turn back into the, to the, to this garage? Is that what you're saying we're designing for there, this way?
It's not for automobiles. It's for if large trucks come from sixty-seven A, up Church Street, across the railroad tracks, have to go on seven A, and then turn into the property.
Is there an opening on, on the Church Street side?
Yeah, that's what this is right here.
Okay.
And that's fifty feet also. So then extending from here.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't seem like they should, they can come in from Church Street, right?
Yes, they could come in from Church Street, or they could come in this way. Basically, the, Trevor Mance has indicated that they would like to maintain two driveway access locations. And, you know, they have that amply right now, so we're trying to accommodate that.
If, if you were trying to back up a tractor trailer, and came in this way, you're almost facing the building with the tractor. If you came in this way and swung towards Church Street, then you could back. If you came in this way and swung towards Church Street, then you could back the trailer in. And, and that's, that seems to me to be an easier maneuver than coming in Church Street and then getting that tractor-trailer turned all the way around.
Yeah. I mean, basically, we just want to show that there will not be loss in functionality with the site, you know, in order to maintain that property owner's cooperation, because we are going to need their approval in obtaining some right-of-way. And I'll show you exactly where that is. So, this just better illustrates the turning movements that we evaluated. Now, I sent all this information up to V-Trans last week. They already sent me an email back today. They went through the same analysis themselves, and they basically came up with the same result. And they, in that email, they say, "We recommend a minimum of 50-foot..."
Right.
...commercial opening.
Yep.
So, it sounds like we're going to get it. Now, we haven't talked to the district. That's, they ultimately are going to sign the permit, but we already have Montpelier on our side, so there's a good chance that it'll be allowed. So, let's go back here real quick. So, then continuing up here, the curb, or the sidewalk would continue with the curb, you know, facing Route 7A, and we've got the lane and the shoulder, and I think it's, I think about 16 or 18 feet from the center line to the curb, because that's what they say that they need for the plow. Now, one thing we put in here, and this does work with all the truck turning, is a little bump out to mimic what's on this side. And that is really, the primary purpose of doing that is to shorten the distance that the pedestrian has to travel from safe point to safe point. Now, this is, you know, and the fact that this one's there is a really good thing, because normally, V-Trans gives us, you know, they don't like them, you know, and they're not looking at it from a design standpoint, a pedestrian standpoint, they're good-looking at it from their plows. So, it would be our recommendation to keep that there, but that's something that can be added or deleted at any time, depending on preference or whether it would be allowed.
What's the standard, what's the bump out in the, as designed there? What's the distance roughly from the edge of where the curb, if it went straight, if you will? Is it a couple of feet, four feet?
Oh, this right here?
Yeah.
It's about three feet.
Three feet?
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that would be also a good dis, you know, it's easier to construct the ramp that way as well. You don't have to impact the sidewalk itself if you want to put the ramp out. And that just makes it, it just makes it better. So, then continuing along through here, and then another driveway opening, and then come back up to the curb until we get to this driveway, and then it would drop again for that driveway. Now, one thing that we haven't added to here, and it wasn't really discussed at the kickoff meeting, or at least what I remember, is a crosswalk here. And so they're not, it hasn't been put on there yet, but that's something that I wanted to bring up for discussion as to whether or not there was a strong inclination. Now, while I was just standing here, I was just, there's a catch basin down here, and I wanted to take some measurements from it, and I'm standing there. Two kids come walking down through here, and they crossed right there, and then they went like across the, you know, it's all open here now. And then they went across here, and they went up to the, up to the school there. So, I mean, it was like, it seemed pretty obvious to me. The problem is, is there's really no infrastructure over here, except for this sidewalk that happens to have a utility pole in the middle of it. So, you know, and then as far as where to put it, you know, typically, you want it, you want your crosswalk in front of the stop bar, so you've got your car stopping, and there's still the crosswalk there in front. You know, now we're looking at issues of possibly moving the stop bar back, and whether that's going to influence site distance and things like that. It's certainly something, you know, I didn't put it on these alternatives, but it's certainly something that we can incorporate into the conceptual design. So, I guess I'm just going to throw it out there like that for now.
Well, and we do, we have a group of people who've really been, Tim is right here, who's been working really hard, and, you know, it would be really helpful, I think, for you to provide, if you want to give Eric a copy, or we can give Eric a copy of that intersection, some of the proposals that you had, Tim.
Yeah, I can tell quickly, the main things that we talked about were lowering the speed limit on 7A to 25, putting in an on-demand crosswalk flasher in the existing crosswalk across 7A there, and we need this curb cut for that to happen, because they won't let us put an on-demand flasher in that dump into a parking lot, like you were saying.
Right.
But the issue of that, of that crosswalk, where to put it on the other side there, certainly has been raised.
Yeah, and I haven't thought as much about that as I have the 7A crosswalk, is where the main kid danger is.
Yeah, and the problem, you know, the problem is, I think the original, you know, cost estimate for this grant really didn't anticipate the cost of any improvements over on that side.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, maybe it'll work. I don't have a cost estimate for this. All three of these options are pretty much the same cost. But when, once we develop the conceptual design, we'll be developing a construction cost estimate, and we'll see, see what we can do. You know, our goal is, you know, to try to get the town the best bang for the buck, essentially, and maximize the use of that grant.
If I could say, one other thing that we're proposing to do, because it does tie into what you were just talking about, is putting lane lines on 7A, delineating where the traffic actually, you know, how far you can pull forward, trying to get site distance before you know you're in 7A.
Yeah, because there's not...
And then putting stop bars as close to 7A, as close to those lane lines as possible, so that, which I believe is four feet, which allows you with a little more comfort to pull up there close and realize, I'm really not in the, in the lanes yet, because it's kind of hard to tell the way the two roads come together at a non-right angle, that whether or not you're in the lanes or not.
Okay.
We had V-Trans look at that the other day, and they said lane lines on the highway just through an intersection are not the norm, but they said it could probably, it might be able to be done, but it's not the normal thing.
Okay. Well, striping is certainly something we can add to this project, at least within the project area. It won't carry on outside of that intersection necessarily, but it's certainly, you know, something that's typically part of it. And, and, you know, even, you know, freshening this up, because it definitely needs to be redone from time to time. And so one thing that we tried to encourage, or we tried to, you know, look at the possibility up here, is, you know, adding a little bit of green space here. Now, this is getting onto that other property, so that's a, you know, it's whether or not the property owner's going to agree to that. Because typically, we're not going to get a permanent easement for that green space, and that's going to become his, his responsibility to maintain. What we will need is this tiny little triangle right here. That's the sidewalk itself. It will be necessary to obtain a permanent easement from that landowner in order to construct that sidewalk. All the rest of this, you know, all these other improvements can be done with temporary easement. But now, we've got the bulk of the sidewalk here, in the right-of-way, here, and here, and it's just this corner right here, and to, to change the geometry here and have it come up and then over, then messes up our truck turning requirements, because this is a skewed intersection, you know, of vehicles, a truck, anyway, is going to have to go into the opposing lane on Route 7A when making a right-hand turn, and that's just not desirable. It's not going to be considered acceptable. So, that, that easement right there is going to be needed. Now, in my discussions with Trevor, he's more than willing to cooperate, but he is worried about future impacts, you know, current and future impacts to the property. And I did, I did talk to him today. He's got a preference, and I'll, I'll tell you what it is as soon as we get through these real quick. Yeah?
Just a quick question on the green space, just to make sure I'm understanding. As we look at what you have mapped out right next to the road, that's the sidewalk, and then to the left where it says expanded green strip for landscaping, that's the green space you're talking about?
That would be a new green space, yes.
Okay. The purpose of that is aesthetics, or to try to create a division between the sidewalk and the parking lot, so that people don't walk from the sidewalk to the parking lot? Or is it a little bit of both?
A little bit of both, and also, really, the, it's all impervious surface right now, and just by adding a little bit of green space can kind of help with the environmental permitting side of it and stormwater management.
Okay.
And it might, it might even offer opportunities for some alternative stormwater management. We haven't really delved into that yet, but it's generally desirable to try to maximize the green space, especially on a site that's like fully completely covered like this one is. All right, so, we did an alternative 1B, which is basically the same thing, except not having as much of an impact with the green space. It's just hugging the green space a little closer, tight to the sidewalk, allowing, you know, a bit more space out here still.
1B also doesn't have the curb extension, right?
And, yeah, you're right. We just took this out of here just to show what it would look like without the curb extension. You know, that's like an add or delete feature. Any one of these alternatives, by the way, you know, we can tweak. It's just, you know, I'm just trying to present all the, all the different types of alternatives that are out there. But other than that, this one's about the same as the first one. And then number two is a flip. So, we're still going to have the green space next to the sidewalk, but have it on the Route 7A side, or have it on the highway side. So, what we're doing now is we're providing the additional horizontal separation from traffic, and then just a curb on the commercial property side. So, that would require, you know, tying in with this sidewalk here, doing a little jog, and then coming up to your driveway entrance. Now, this driveway entrance, we've drawn at 40 feet. Because we're set back from the highway, it offers more room, and it actually works with the truck turning movements, although V-Trans came back and still said they would recommend the 50. So, I mean, that can, this option could be modified with the 50-foot driveway opening. And then, you know, we kind of, you know, just looking at where this existing planter is now, and, you know, not encroaching any further than that onto the property, what it would look like there. And then you've got a lot of space out here, and quite, instead of having the bump out, we just bring the whole curb out to that same distance of where the bump out was before. So, this distance that the crosswalk would traverse is the same as the first alternative that shows you that had that little bump out there. So, I mean, it's just, it's a variation on the same theme. There are some disadvantages here in that we were going to, we would require a permanent easement now throughout this entire section here, so we'd really need this property owner to be on board with this idea. And then, just a little variation on, well, just to show you how we did the truck movements here as well. Another variation on the same theme, taking that sidewalk and just pushing it back out to the road just a little bit further, just so we don't have to get as much easement, but it's generally the same concept otherwise.
So, everything outside, the sidewalk is basically touching the parking lot, so to speak, and then everything outside of it is green space?
Exactly. But there is going to be, you know, there is curb on both sides. So, there is that vertical separation, you know, we know cars can make it up a curb if they really try, but generally, they won't. And it provides that added protection.
And with this one, looks like both of the entrances are 40 feet, or the 2B?
Yeah, we drew that for alternative 2, A and B, just because we knew it was...
Oh, and this is number three?
Yeah, just to move it possible. And then, coming back to number three, the sidewalk itself has the same alignment as number one, except we've taken away all the green spaces. And, you know, really, to do that is to just, you know, show minimal encroachment onto the adjacent property. Now, I spoke with Trevor Mance today. This is the alternative he likes. Question?
Yeah, just one other question. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just trying to think about consistency with what we currently have.
Yes.
Did you, did you look at, I'm sure you looked at, and I can't remember, even though I drive down this road every single day. Do we have green space on the 7A side, right now?
You do, on the east side, but not the west side. So, so, alternative 1 and 3 maintain consistency with the existing cross-section of the road, where you've got curb and sidewalk on the west side, and you've got curb, green space, variable green space, and then sidewalk.
Okay, that makes sense.
On the east side.
So, 1 and 3 maintain consistency with what we have there?
Yeah, so, yeah, alternative 2 is not consistent, because we have that offset. Green space starts on the west side. So, this is, this is curb on both sides, so you've got that, you know, it's elevated, you know, there's a, there's a way to prevent vehicles from just driving across it, and then it'll drop here, but still have the sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk, so you still have that visual distinction that this is where the pedestrian belongs, and cars got to watch out for them, and pedestrians stay there as much as they will. Here, we've kept the bump out through this option here, and, and then just expanded that corner there, you know, where that existing planter is, just kind of filled in that whole corner right there now. This would still require an easement here, and then a temporary easement, you know, pretty much along here to build it. And, you know, Trevor said he'd, you know, he'd be accepting to this option.
And in terms of the opening, that was, that would accommodate, Trevor?
Yes, that'll work. He's happy with that, and he's particularly happy with V-Trans corroborating our analysis.
Right, right.
So, he's got a fairly high level of confidence that this will work for him. The, the other two just had two-money impacts over here of taking away space that's there. We're worried about the parking here with the curb coming closer. There were maintenance issues, and I understand all those concerns. So, here, we've tried to balance as best we can the needs of the property owner and what we're trying to get out of this project. And again, like, all of these can consider the crossing up here as well. You know, and these, just also to let you know, these two locations for the driveway entrances happen to be at the lowest points, so drainage already travels to those areas. Here, there's a catch basin. So, we would probably have to maybe do a little regrading here, and maybe some regrading up in here, but it would be very minimal, and we would generally be able to match existing drainage patterns. At this point, we haven't done a detailed analysis. We just want to make sure it'll work. In the conceptual design, it'll be very detailed, to ensure that there's not a problem that's being created by putting a curb where one doesn't currently exist, because that can be a problem. I think I've covered everything I needed to cover. General, yes?
I have another question. On, in terms of pedestrian safety, the one where you have the curb that went or was, you know, the bubble cell area in the corner, untrained eye looks safer than the bump out, but that safe spot is defined, you know, over a wider extent before you get to the crosswalk, where the bump out, you know, it's, it's just a curb that, cars seem like that could surprise them.
Well, what could be done? We could take, for instance, this situation, and have the curb line approximately mimic what we had shown on that alternative 2. So, in other words, instead of having the curb come out and then do, make this a rough change, as you're saying, have it come out still consistent with the, you know, the truck line that needs to be kept, and then catch this, and then bring it back more gradually. And that could be, it could be a widened sidewalk. It could be, you could use a different paver type for, to fill that space. It probably wouldn't work well to be green space, just because it's so thin. I mean, nothing's really going to grow well there, and then you've got to worry about maintenance, all that.
Maintenance, yeah, yeah.
But that's certainly, certainly something that can be done. And then, you know, incorporating that into this alternative, it does not, so my assumption would be that, you know, it'd still go well with that property owner.
I would, I personally would like that better from a pedestrian safety point of view.
My feeling is, my feeling is, is that would also provide a better solution for road maintenance as well. Those, those little things like that are a pain to plow around, where if you have the curbs continuous, it eliminates that problem.
A little softer.
Looks like a win-win.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Indeed.
One other comment, just on aesthetics of green space. My experience is unless we have a plan to maintain that green space, it'll just be mud when it rains, and a place to collect cigarette butts when it's dry. And so I'm in favor of less green space myself, unless we plan to actually, you know, plant flowers year-round, or make sure the grass keeps growing, or whatever it takes to do that. But we may have, you know, other reasons for wanting to do it, like you said, like drainage or environmental permits, but in terms of aesthetics, I'm fine without green space.
Tim, I think you're a realist on that. You know, as far as seeing five years down the line, what are we going to do with, with that space?
What I've seen is, in situations like this, particularly at intersections, either the municipality has to take responsibility, or a community group has to do that, and, you know, they'll have like a spring planting... And, you know, they'll have like a spring planting time or something like that, but they have to be committed to it. Otherwise, it basically just gets filled with mulch.
That's, that's what's happened. We had a group that was very active, and then, you know, I mean, people get tired, and-
Old?
And older. Yeah, and not because they don't want to do it, but they just aren't able to.
Other public comment? More than welcome.
Down, by the way, so that we can keep a record of all the comments that are received.
So Eric, if you could just quickly give a, give a quick summary of where we go at this point?
All right, where I believe we're at here is a preference towards Alternative 3, which has slight modifications here, to have like a widened sidewalk with, it could either be just widened all concrete, or we could use a different paver type for whatever it's be- All these, all these are all five-foot sidewalks, by the way, which is, you know, standard minimum. You know, so anything that's less, that's more than five, we could do like a paver or some other type of contrasting. You know, just for aesthetic, really. But we can work that out in the conceptual design. Yeah, so with that, with that modification primarily, as far as the green space goes, again, we've got some figuring out on how the final design of that's going to look, whether it'll exist as it's drawn here, or just be eliminated.
Okay. All right, is your recommendation, Alternative 3?
Yes.
Okay.
Alternative 3 with those slight modifications, based on public comment.
Yes, Jay?
That, yeah, now, the right-of-way is right here, down here. So in this space here, it would either be retained owner, be retained by that private property owner, or it could be worked into a permanent easement, where it would become part of the right-of-way. It probably wouldn't be possible to put the benches there. V-Trans wouldn't allow it unless it were made public. Now, there is some room in here, perhaps, that's still in the right-of-way, that were a bench or something like that. But that, that kind of infrastructure, you know, they're not going to pay for it unless the town or the state is going to maintain ownership of it. But from a technical perspective, absolutely, you know, that could be worked into there. That's, that's a good suggestion, in fact. I have heard that a lot of times, folks drop off their kids in that parking lot, and then they cross the street and go to school.
Eric, actually, right, right in the spot where we had talked about having some sort of a street light there, an alternative to what's there now, and that would go in that little-
That's, yeah, that's my second bullet I didn't bring up, the Church Street crosswalk and lighting. So lighting, I guess, was, was written about in the grant application, but it didn't come out in our scope of work. But it's certainly something that, you know, if, if there's all a desire, it's planned for it now. You know, even if there's not money in the budget to at least, you know-
Lay the groundwork for-
Lay out the groundwork, let's, you know, add some conduit and some bases to our construction contract, you know, even if you can't afford the fixture itself right now. You know, there's not a lot of places that you can put anything, but certainly, here would make a lot of sense.
I mean, right now, they exist there, and over-
There's one here, there's one down here, and I think there's one down here, but this is pretty much a dead zone.
Well, what I'm talking about is, it's actually, it's operated by that property owner.
Not illumination, signal.
Exactly, it has that, that kind of, what do you call that, vulture-
It's a light, it's that weird white thing that you showed in the beginning.
Like gas stations and things like that.
That's right, that's right.
And from the looks of it, it, it may or may not be on their property.
Well, that's always been kind of a question. But I know that Trevor has, had expressed from the very beginning that it would be nice to have some sort of lighting. Now, we'd need to figure that out, because the, the electrical, you know, operation is in his garage, which he didn't even realize until we got into this. He found a switch in there, turned it on, and the lights, lo and behold, the lights went on. But it certainly is a critical corner.
Yeah, that'll require some coordination with him, of course. But, you know, what's there now are the Cobra-style, you know, the streetlights are the Cobra-style. And whether to match that or to do something else, I mean, that's kind of up to the town.
You mean the Cobra, Cobra-style, I don't know, when you say-
The, the streetlight that's in front of the store right now, that arches out, and then has the oval-ish-
Yes, yes, yes.
They call that the Cobra-style lights. They're generally, most village centers are trying to get away from those now. They do some more village-centric type lighting. But that's a much bigger project than what we're talking about here. This is just the intersection. You know, I guess, that's something to keep on the table. You know, if, you know, we could look at potential power source, and how to design that into the project, just so that, you know, right after putting all this new sidewalk in, then you want to look at lighting, and you got to rip everything up again. That wouldn't really work out very well.
Eric, how would you agree on this stop bar location for Buck Hill? I mean, for Church, turning on to either north or south, on to 7A? In that, well, it's, it's, you have to creep to Penn because of the misalignment. You have to creep easterly and into the southbound travel lane to make your turn. So I don't know what position that stop bar reflects. That, that I'm assuming is the optimum stop place with no parallel parking to the north?
Right now, at this alternative level, we've thrown it in there to demonstrate the need to have one there.
Okay.
In doing the design, what it would really take is being on the field and saying, here's the best location for it, and then reflecting that on the plans.
It is an issue, though. I'm wondering how, how it's going to be resolved.
And the conversation about a potential crosswalk going north also has an impact on that very topic.
Right, right. And those are the details that will go into the, into the next phase of design.
Tim?
Yeah, just for what it's worth, in our intersection plan that we've come up with for safety, we had, like I said, the lane lines and the stop bars. And I had put the stop bars at the minimum distance from the lane lines, four feet. And that's just based on going through that intersection and knowing that you got to creep up as far as you can to see north and south to get any side distance. And so, you know, anything short of that, you know, is not really going to be relevant, because everybody knows you got to get up there and look.
Yeah, right.
The idea with the lane lines and the stop bars is to indicate, you know, really, the ragged edge of what you can do and still be safe, and then, then you're on the road.
Eric, what about the possibility of, if, just as something to think about, is moving the, that, that crossing maybe back like to the spot between the two driveways? Further nor, further west?
Absolutely. That's certainly a possibility. And it's, you know, the way we have this drawn now, there's actually a lot of space here that, you know, something could be put, or even over here. You know, so that, you know, just, it wouldn't take much to extend this sidewalk to have it actually match up to something. That's certainly a possibility. At the top of my head, you know, I don't know the, the design standards requirements as far as, you know, there are going to be issues, just because of the proximity to the stop sign. It's certainly desirable to have your crosswalk in front of the stop bar, but it's not necessarily, it could be treated as a mid-block cross, even though it's only, you know, a few feet back. But also, that being municipal right-of-way, we have a lot more flexibility in what we, in what we end up doing.
And there's, the other realistic approach is, people tend to take the point of least resistance. So if you put the, the crosswalk down the street 100 feet, many people won't go to it anyway, so.
Exactly. Yeah, that needs to be considered as well.
That was our concern, because one of the things the committee had talked about was bringing it, bringing it to the west, so that it actually directed them across the street to where the existing sidewalk is on the north side of Church Street.
Right.
And that, but that was a concern. You know, would they, would they actually cross down that way? And, you know, it's, yeah.
I think, I think it's highly variable. Depends on the pedestrian.
Any other comment from the board or the public? Tim?
One last quick one. You made me think of it when you mentioned the lighting is, if we do get permission for our on-demand crosswalk flasher across 7A there, there'll be wiring and poles for that. So if wiring could go into the sidewalk when it comes up, it'll be a, a good time. What do we anticipate this happening?
We're hoping a year from, from this year, next summer, next, that's, that's our goal.
Spring '14.
Yeah, if you talk to the V-Trans project supervisor, who, he couldn't come today. The state's limiting the travel on its employees, so. But we're going to keep him updated. He, I think he's anticipating a much longer schedule. But we're doing what, everything that we can to, because, I mean, in all reality, I mean, there's not, this isn't a big transportation project. For it to have to follow the same process that the Bennington bypass follows, and the Circ Highway open, Chitney County, I mean, it's just, it's a little ridiculous. And so, we've gone through this process enough that we're trying to anticipate the steps as much as possible. But we'll certainly be getting on the conceptual design pretty, pretty fast now. Once we get past the next meeting, we should be able to really jump on it.
There being no comment. We've got 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, and 3. And I think it'd be helpful to have a motion to select one of the three approaches for the next, so we can focus on the next design phase.
I'll make a motion that we approve Alternative 3 with some of the modifications that we talked about this evening.
Lighting and the crosswalk to Church Street.
Right.
I, I, I think if we just say Alternative 3.
Right.
Okay.
And-
And we'll refine it.
Because there, I think there's going to be a lot more input from the committee and the public, and-
That's fine.
As you get-
That's fine.
Further into the details.
Wanted to note that we're looking at not doing the bump out that appears there. So that's the reason I mentioned modifications.
But it, it may come back in.
Okay.
With more conversation and all that, you never know.
I will second Karen's motion for Alternative 3.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
I, yeah, I just wanted, this is, this is a general design.
This is really, all I need is a little bit of feedback, so that we can go on to the next phase.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, there being none, all those in favor of moving forward on Alternative 3 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Carrie's unanimously. Anything else, Eric?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Very, very helpful.
Oh, don't worry about it.
You're good, you're good.
Like that PowerPoint projection, it's so 20th century.
Is that unusual for here?
It is, for this room, yes.
I'm glad I brought my screen.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too.
Otherwise, Lawn would have been holding on.
We've done them up there, and we tried back on that gray wall. It wasn't a pretty picture. Okay. We got a email from Phyllis Poreo suggesting that we try to have a conversation with the town of Bennington about reserving sewer capacity in the event that the town of Shaftesbury needs it. Is Phyllis here tonight? Okay. I'm not sure what would be involved. Margie, if you had a chance to-
I haven't had a chance to get to her.
Or to the town?
Or the town.
Okay.
Honestly.
Okay.
The idea behind it, one of the other members of the committee had spoken to me a few weeks back. Art Whitman had kind of raised the same thought in, in conversation, was just that, you know, having just some sort of a note to our neighbors to the south that, you know, expressing an interest, or just so that they know that, you know, in the future, you know, if we maybe decided to, or there was, became a need to attach to a sewage treatment facility, that, you know, we'd let them know that we would be interested in talking to them in the future, and so that if they were planning any expansion of their facilities, you know, that, you know, it would just be a, more of a conversation or a talking point. This would allow us the, you know, maybe just an in, should they decide to expand their facilities, or, you know, this, they would know that we were considering that as an option, if it made sense to them. So, that's, in real simple terms, that's kind of the, the intent or the thought process behind the conversation.
So I'm, if, if the, it appears that that's, the Economic Development Committee is recommending such a move, and I guess I'm just wondering, is there any reason that we couldn't authorize our Economic Development Committee to make that, to approach them? Because, because they've done, you know, I certainly was very much involved in the sewer feasibility study. And they may be the appropriate town committee or group to, you know, rather than Margie, for instance-
To lay the framework for it.
Exactly.
Well, I think they're organized a little differently in Bennington with having a town manager system. The town manager's scope of authority is laid out in statute for, that's much more specific than the, say, a town administrator. And it may be helpful to have, you know, either Art or representative of the Economic Development Committee and a member of the select board, means the town manager, just to get a better understanding of, you know, if this is the kind of thing that's possible, and what the process would be for doing it.
Well, that's fine. I guess I was just looking, you know, thinking maybe it made sense for the overture to come from the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, I think, who is the liaison with the?
That's me. So I can reach out, I can reach out for Phyllis and talk to her about that, Phyllis or Art, and see if they'd be interested in doing that.
Have a meeting with the town manager. Because I think, to the extent it's possible, the Bennington town manager could explain, well, you know, here are the, here are our institutions or committees that, or departments that would handle something like this. And these are the general steps I see, and you can start laying out a plan for how you'd follow up on it after you sort of get the lay of the land from the town manager. If, if it's at all possible. So, yeah, that's-
Okay.
Okay. So Billy, you're going to follow up with that?
Yes, I will, sir.
Okay, great. Any other discussion on that topic? Okay. Cam has applied for a minor Act 250 permit and with the town for a compost facility at the town of Bennington's transfer station. And we were notified, because we're in a budding town, and I think everybody got a copy of-
But it was, I had to clarify this for Trevor, that it was the BCRC's invitation to us to send them comments. It was not a direct notification from the district commission.
Okay, that's helpful. So, you know, now that we've had the invitation, only the board can respond. So I was obligated to find out if the select board has any comments they want to forward to the BCRC.
I certainly, you know, as in a budding town, I would support it. It's being located in an industrial zone, and seems to be a very fitting spot. There's plenty of room for the operation, and I, you know, I think that Shaftesbury should certainly support that.
I agree with you, and especially given the point that you brought up earlier tonight, Lawn, about our planning for, you know, six, seven years-
for, you know, six, seven years down the line, it could end up being something where a partnership with Bennington could, could turn around and help benefit this town as well.
I think the, you know, I do remember in some of that paperwork, whether it was from BCRC.
I'm not sure people can hear you, Karen.
Oh, in some of the paperwork we received, one of the, one of the points that was made was that Shaftesbury would also be affected, impacted because, not just in, but, because I think the finished compost product would actually be coming back through Shaftesbury to the trans, to the TAM facility and maybe prepared for purchase there or that it would, that the purchase would be from his facility. Am I recalling that correctly?
Yeah, that's what Chris Williams got from the application when he reviewed it. But that would require probably an amendment to a zoning permit. So.
Okay.
Locating the compost facility in Bennington for Act 250 purposes doesn't change how the TAM solid waste facility can be used.
Here in Shaftesbury.
Here in Shaftesbury.
Right.
So those are sort of apples and oranges.
Mm-hmm, okay. I just recall that that was, that was a point that was raised, that it, that the byproduct would come back to Shaftesbury.
Right.
For sale. It's a question.
Yeah.
Are we even asking a question?
Sure.
They just had a couple of questions. In the paper, they said it was major, or Foster had changed it from a minor to a major in his interview in the paper, because he said that since it was something working at the Bennington transfer station, blah, 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 and he had to revert it to a major, that was just. The next thing is that N and N application said that TAM would be collecting the food waste on his routes, you know, throughout his routes. And about a year ago, when all the composting became in the news and everything, I subscribed to a magazine, it's called Vitocycle Magazine, and they had a whole chapter section on when you start with food waste composting, that trucks need to really be retrofitted because they're not accustomed to all that food waste, which it becomes liquid very rapidly when it starts to deteriorate and become aerobic. And what happens in the regular garbage trucks is, is that they meet all this leach out all over the roadways and they really need to be upgraded to different types of garbage trucks for all the food waste, or else all the rats that we have at any of our, you know, all of the areas, the trucks just can't handle the pure food waste. People usually collect it in these plastic bins, and then these plastic bins are just dumped into the trucks, and it is, it does create a kind of a hazard. So that was my one question. And the other thing is, I saw that the transfer station will be used for the composting, but will the transfer station also be used to separate any food waste to be brought down to Bennington? Because that's a question too, because it said his routes is going to be used for the collection. I didn't know if they were going to be coming to Shaftesbury first and being, you know, put together and then TAM. Just a question.
Yeah, I think those are good questions to ask, ask at the Act 250 hearing. Because, as you said, the information that we've got from the BCRC talked about a minor change, so apparently some things have changed since we were informed about it and.
I'm just going from that, it was in the paper. That, you know, that was in the news paper.
Right, and I'm not questioning it, I'm just saying that my experience with permits is sometimes the issues evolve as you're going through the permit process. It may start off with people concerned about one thing, but the further they get into it, there are other issues that come up. So, from the town's perspective, you know, if he's going to, if anyone is going to propose using a property now for wholesale or retail sales, and that's not what they're permitted for, that's, requires a zoning permit amendment. And those are questions put to the zoning administrator, because he would be the first step in that whole process. Okay, and that's independent of the select board, although the select board could choose to have a position. We historically have done that very sparingly, in my experience here. Tom, you've been in the town a long time, the select board doesn't frequently take sides from your experience.
Not generally, no.
Yeah.
It's a.
Rare event, if they did.
It's left to the officers that are charged, or the boards that are charged, because of the specialized experience.
Right. And the select board doesn't come in and say, we're for this DRB, we're against this DRB. They tend to let the DRB do its business. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Were you here for this issue, Tom? Okay. Do you want to add anything or?
No, I was just curious as to what the select board was going to do, how it ended up on the agenda.
Well, the way it ended up on the agenda was when we got the notice asking for feedback. I did write Trevor, because I thought it was a good location for his facility. He had looked at our transfer station property, but we had plans for the usable space at that point for the new town garage facility. And then he had talked about another space either on ours or just adjacent, but it was too small. So, you know, my, my personal thought was that this was really a good move, and I suggested, you know, we take it up tonight to see if, because I thought that the select board may or may not want to say, yeah, we, we support the project as in a budding town. But Trevor said that really wasn't necessary and preferred we not take one position either way. So, we did have to go forward and find out if anybody wanted to provide any specific feedback to the BCRC. So that's how it got on the agenda, was to respond to it. I can't just on my own respond to that kind of request, because I'm not the select board. You know, the board as a whole has to respond. Okay, so.
So what you would, if you did take any action, would be passing the comment back to the BCRC?
Right. Right. And, you know, I think everybody was just speaking individually. We think overall it's a, we need composting and that's a good location for it.
It's, it's going to be mandated here in not too many years, and that is an excellent spot, it's in a landfill, already designated, 200 acres.
Right. And the detail items, like Kathy Genesaw were pointing up, are not reasons not to do composting, they're reasons to do it in a particular way. And so, the state regulates it right now, and it's up to them and the owner to see if it, it can work the way the state wants it to work. It may not be economical, I just, that's way beyond my, my knowledge and information. Okay. So I think we're done with that. We, last week we circulated a conflict of interest policy. I worked on the garage project, so I really didn't get the second, no, the sixth draft of the conflict of interest policy done. But the idea for this conflict of interest policy is based on a legal opinion from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It cannot apply to elected officials. The board can impose one on itself, but we can't impose one, say, on the listers, because they're independently elected. We couldn't impose one on the town clerk or the treasurer. But as a first step, we can impose one on ourselves and all of the boards for which we appoint town officials. So we could make it a conflict of interest policy that applies to the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission, and also to the advisory committees, like the rec committee, facilities committee and.
Cemetery committee.
Cemetery committee and the like. So that would be the scope of the application. And then I guess what would be helpful tonight is to get some feedback on the approach that's being taken. I wish Carl could have been here, because I think he had some thoughts about, you know, how do you, how do you spell out in plain English, a concept as slippery as an apparent conflict of interest? You know? Because it's in the eye of the beholder, but you still want to be mindful of it. And the idea of the direct conflicts of interest and indirect conflicts of interest comes from a model policy that, that I got from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So, I guess I'm, tonight I'm looking for feedback so that I can finish the second, or the sixth draft of this policy.
The, one of the things that I noticed in, when I, let's see, page, on page 3, Lon, it just, it seems to be contradictory.
Okay.
Let's see, wait a second. If we go to Article 5, Section C.
Okay.
And compare that to Article 6B, okay? So, it reads, the first section, recusal disqualification, reads, "A public officer shall not personally or through any member of his or her household, business associate, employer, or employee represent, appear for, or negotiate in a private capacity on behalf of any person or organization in any cause proceeding application or other matter pending before the public body in which the officer holds office or is employed." And then if you go to Article 6, disclosure and inquiry, it says, "In the event a public officer personally or through any member of the household, business associate, employer, or employee represents, appears for, or negotiates in a private capacity on behalf of any person or organization in any cause proceeding application or other, other matter pending before the public body in which the officer holds office, the public officer shall disclose his/her relationship to that public body."
Okay, that's not, that's not a contradiction. Because 5 says what you can or cannot do as a public official. And 6 says, if you have a relationship with some, one of, if you have a relationship with someone and the business of that someone is coming before the board, you have an obligation to disclose it so that the board can determine whether or not there is a conflict of interest and exclude you from participating if you don't recuse yourself. So one is what you're, what you, when you're not permitted to act due to a conflict of interest. And the second one is, an obligation to disclose when there is a conflict of interest.
Okay, okay.
And I think one of the things I just caught from you reading all that is we have way too many nouns in there.
Yes, yes, I know.
You know, you can lose the meaning by referring to like six or 12 different categories of people. If we put those in the definitions and then reduce the nouns to one or two, it would read.
Yes, I agree. I'm still a little bit confused about it though, Lon, because, again, the way that it reads in, in the beginning section, recusal, it says, "A public officer shall not personally represent, appear for, or negotiate before the public body." Now, then later, it says, "In the event he personally represents, appears for, or negotiates, he has to disclose his relationship. In such cases, he shall not sit with the remaining members of the public body and shall not be included in any deliberations other than to the extent that all applicants and other members of the public are included." But that section does not say that he cannot appear before the board that he sits on. It says he can't deliberate and he can't discuss, but it does not, it basically says in the very beginning, if he appears and negotiates on behalf of someone, he has to disclose it. But he can't then be involved in any of the deliberations. And previous to that, it says, "A public officer shall not personally, blah, 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 negotiate matters pending before the public body in which he holds office." So I still think that there is a conflict there. It's that it, that it, one contradicts the other.
One says he can't do it, but the other one says, well, if he does do it.
Right. He's got to disclose it if he's going, if he's doing it, he's got to disclose it. But it does not say he cannot present before that board. It says he can't be involved in deliberations or voting, but.
Okay.
So.
So here's, here's a, here's a tough question. Right now, this week, Rob Wilmington wrote a legal opinion, because it was a question of whether a business can be precluded from doing business with the town on the basis that a person is a member of the select board. And that could be true for both candidates for the select board, because we've done business with one employer and we've also done business with another person who runs construction. And Rob's legal opinion was, I think I, Margie got a copy of this, said that as long, state law has long been that as long as the select board person who wants to do business with the town essentially leaves the table and does not participate in the conversation about the business with the town, then it's okay for a select board business as an, either as an employee or as a business owner to do business with the town.
But this is something different.
I know what this says. So, going to the question to get some direction from the board, do we want to have a blanket prohibition from a member of the select board being able to come forward and as a private citizen and saying, I think you need to do this or that? Because there could be other situations. For example, the select board adopts a zoning bylaw. And let's say the proposed zoning bylaw directly affected my property, none of the other select board members, but it would have an impact either on my use of the property or the value of my property. This conflict of interest policy applies to that situation. Just like it applies to the situation where the select board member, the select board member's employer wants to do business with the town. Should they be able to step around from the table saying, I'm acting in a capacity as a private person and I want to address the board, either on something that affects me directly or something that affects either my business or my employer? So, you know, this, these are the kind of, when you start getting down to the details, how, when can a, when can a select board member appear before the select board and act like a private citizen? So I'm, I'm looking for some feedback. So I'll wrestle with the language. And if you say no, never. And if you say, "No, never," I'll come up with language like that. And as I think it through, I'll come back with problems like the zoning bylaw one. And you can think about it, well, do we want it to be that, that broader prohibition? Now, if we don't want it to be that broader prohibition, then maybe we can tease out how to deal with some exceptions that, that allow people to protect the type of personal interests that they should be able to protect, like the use of their land or personal property.
My gut is, on that topic, would be that, particularly given that we live in a small community, and some very quality candidates for various boards might also be business owners or obviously our property owners in the community. I think it would be probably somewhat foolhardy to prohibit them from, for example, if, if I own a business that could provide a service to the town, let's say I'm a plumbing contractor or something, that if I step to the board, that means that I'm automatically precluded from ever doing business with the town. That seems a little bit short sighted, in my opinion, given the size and of the community that we have.
All right, we have hired the, a spouse of an elected official to do plumbing work. You know, is there a conflict of interest there? I mean, it's a separately elected official, but...
Yeah, but...
Okay. Any, any other feedback about that? Karen, I mean, you picked up on the contradiction. Do you have a feeling which one is more comfortable for you in terms of protecting the integrity of the board?
I certainly like the language that states that they need to, you know, that it's really a given that they have to announce that they have a conflict of interest. Ethically, I think that's really incumbent on someone. And, you know, I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, because I really do agree with what Craig just said, but I also don't want it to get sticky in terms of these two different pieces that just seem to be very, to me, anyway.
They are. You're, you're right. So I, I guess what I'm doing is I'm looking for a push in one direction or the other. And if you say there should be some discretion, that helps me. Yeah, Billy?
I would definitely like to go in the direction where the board member is responsible for disclosing the conflict of interest. I think especially if we get into, if we get into the muddy waters of, you know, we can't do business with the employer of a select board member. I mean, you're going to look at things like, if you have a select board member who works at, say, Home Depot, are we all of a sudden precluded from ever getting a supply there? And, you know, if they were the only person in the area that had it reasonably, does our, you know, do we then have to, you know, hypothetically speaking, buy, you know, buy product in Albany just to not have a conflict of interest? I think, you know, I think we could get ourselves into, into that type of situation. When we do have some, you know, some suppliers in this area that employ, you know, 80, 100 people, I mean, we could end up, you know, end up really precluding people from local government, so...
Is the distinction between appearing on behalf of somebody else, a select board member saying, "I want to recuse myself because I want to argue in favor of this buddy of mine," or this colleague, so that the select board will either give the colleague the contract or, as opposed to a person saying, "This directly involves me or a family member"?
That one I...
Yeah, that's, that's getting a little dicier, I think.
I think that you have, in my opinion, and that was, you know, that and 50 cents, buy me half a cup of coffee, advocating for a friend or acquaintance is one thing. If you're not collecting a paycheck or someone that you, you know, a family member isn't collecting a paycheck or something or some big advantage of it, I think you're, again, you're, you're going a little out of bounds on trying to regulate that.
Any other things that jumped out at anyone?
The only, the...
Go ahead, Billy.
The only thing that really jumped out at me was kind of going back to the definitions on page one, and I know we looked at them quite a bit. The one thing that, the one thing is we're looking at direct and indirect interests that stood out to me was when we talk about number four, it says, "An indirect personal interest exists when an official votes on a matter for which the official's objectivity may be compromised by the official's relationship with an individual or group." I feel like we might need some way to define a relationship there, because I think we, we build relationships in everything, in everything that we do. And a relationship could be as simple as saying, you know, we see the same people at meetings every week, so there, you know, there is a professional relationship between the board and the peop, and the people in the community or between, you know, any other board in the town and the people in the community. So I think, I think with that, we leave ourselves open to quite a few arguments of conflict of interest, this board doesn't like me, conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, you were with the anti-beagle group last year.
Mm-hmm.
So now anybody related to the beagle group, you can't sit as a select board member and act on anything. Okay.
So I'm, I'm not really sure how you, how you fix that without over, or how you massage that without overdoing it, but I just, I'd just be careful with that interpretation, I guess.
Okay, I can work on that. Any other thoughts?
I don't think we have addressed your question, Lon, yet.
Okay.
About a select board member stepping forward as a private citizen, coming back to the table.
People have a problem with that?
With what, a select board address, member addressing the board?
On something that directly affects the select board member.
I think you're getting to it. So what I envision is that they've recused themselves, they've announced a conflict of interest. And they're out there. And then somehow discussions evolve in a way?
No, the issue directly affects them, so there's the conflict of interest. But then they've, the select board member feels that in order to protect their interests, that they need to address the board so the board understands how they're affected as a private citizen by a proposed or potential action of the select board.
So hypothetically speaking, my properties zoned RR80. Planning Commission recommends to rezone my neighborhood as an industrial, so to speak.
Right, perfectly.
I've, I've got to be recused from this, but now my choices are either resign from the select board and speak up on the other side of the table, or you're saying, you know, if we ban people, select board members from addressing the board, I'd either have to resign or not speak up on my own behalf.
Right.
Right, and I, and I don't...
If it's, if it's a blanket prohibition...
Yeah, I mean, that's really taking away your right as a resident of the town at that point. That's the way I see it, anyway.
I would view it the same way.
So I, I don't...
I, I think as board members, we all have to, to be able to maintain an objectivity that if one of us has to sit on the other side of the table, that we're not looking at them as, I mean, we may be colleagues here, but you know what, we're friends with half the people in the community, too.
That's right.
And when they come up, we have to maintain that objectivity. I don't see a difference.
Margie, you?
I guess what I'm wondering is whether there's a way to craft language so that if your concern was not going to be able to be represented by any other constituent or resident, because your situation is so unique and the interest before, that they ask, there's such a personal impact that's unique only to you, then yes, you could appear as a private citizen. But in many cases, the zoning issue would be a class. There would be a class of affected citizenry. It's everybody within that zone. It's not just you personally. But if it were something to do with your own personal business, let's say, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to...
I think that's a good point, but let's take that one step further. Let's say that people spoke up about how that change in zone was either going to help or hurt them. Why should the property owner be in any different position than every other property owner merely by virtue of the fact that they're on the select board? As, as long as they disclose the conflict of interest and they're out there with the public and there's no sidebars with the select board, you know, going to individuals saying, "You can't do this or you can't do that," but it's all done publicly, why should they be disadvantaged by their...
Why should they be disadvantaged? Well, some people might say, and I remember when we had that VLCT training, that, you know, you could have a board that is going to put more weight to an argument that comes from, let's say, one of their own than just somebody out there that, you know, is Billy's neighbor who's going to be impacted exactly the same way perhaps that Billy would be. You know, it certainly is an issue that's come up for other boards in town, when you might have a board member that makes a presentation on behalf of a client to the board, and that was the specific situation that came up at the VLCT training, that that's, you know, that that's a really, that's a tenuous line that you're walking across because there could be the perception that that presentation has more of an advantage in the minds of the board that it's being presented to because they have a relationship with the presenter that maybe the neighbor who's opposed to it doesn't have.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I think one of the distinctions I can wrestle with is where it's a direct interest. I'm advocating for my own property. And it's another thing where you go, not because you're affected, but because you want to be the advocate for somebody else's interests. And I, I think we might be able to say, I think we could say, when you hold elective office, you've given up the right to be an advocate for specific people. That is, you're, you're, you've given up the right to...
Advocate for your 87-year-old mother who can't make it to a meeting that's going to last until 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, maybe.
Gee, that's really rough. I'd quit. I'd quit the board.
Hey, you guys know that I like to paint the worst-case scenario and say...
Right, I'm, I'm thinking more about financial interests. And maybe that's another area where we can make a distinction. I mean, I could see somebody coming and saying, you know, "My mother owns this piece of property she has to mention. She can't advocate for herself." And that would be, that, I wouldn't have as much of a problem with that. Because who else?
No, I, I, I understand what you're looking at. I just wanted to make sure that we saw that that, which side of the line that fell on.
There's a difference there, right, right, yeah.
No, I do. I was, I was presupposing a financial interest. Any comments from anybody or any input anybody wants to throw in? These are not easy issues. Okay, we've got other business to do, so let me wrestle with that and I'll bring it back to you. Margie, we have to do the certificate of highway mileage. It's an annual joy.
All right, I, let's just table it till Monday. I did not circulate it yet.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's fine. And then your report?
My report is that the warning for the bond vote will go to the banner tomorrow. I'm right in the middle of developing job descriptions and Craig and I are getting together on Thursday. This is an ongoing effort. And we have put the bids out for the fire warden's brush truck, brush, brush truck body, okay?
retrofit.
The retrofit, and you'll get that on the 25th. He wanted to be available to meet with you that night to open the bids here or where, at the school, wherever we're going to be that night. And we're already planning for the spring household hazardous waste event, but that's, that's only just beginning and there's a lot more going on. But the one procedural issue I wanted to raise to your attention was the, the defect in the adoption process for the highway access ordinance, if that I did not meet the 14-day posting deadline for the ad. And it's supposed to be within 14 days, so...
Well, we, we can take it up at the next meeting.
On the 11th, and I was calculating that if we re-adopt, then we've, we push back the adoption date two weeks.
That's fine.
So...
That's the fix, to re-adopt the policy, then put out the ad.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if, if you had to do it after town meeting, for whatever reason, I mean, because of how full the plate is right now, that's fine, too. But if you think we can do it the 11th and get the notice out, that's, that's great.
And looking at it one last time, I did see, I'd still have some concerns that I didn't think we were, that we addressed in the final version, but I'll talk to you about how to address that, maybe bring it up again on the 11th.
We'll take it up at the next meeting.
Yeah.
If you outline those, I could take a little of the language and see if there's a fix.
Yeah. So that was really it.
Other business? Billy, do you want to talk about the website development?
Sure. Margie, do you have packets that...
Yes, I do.
Okay, so Margie's getting packets. Jen Holly dropped off some packets here at Call Hall today. These include the written estimate for what she and I had gone over price-wise, and they also include some, some drafts of what she did for our homepage, so everyone could have an idea of what a visual would look like on it.
She only sent one copy of the, her proposal, so I thought I would disseminate that for next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I actually haven't, haven't seen this in person yet. I've gone over everything verbally. I'm assuming that it's what we talked about. Once it's disseminated, I can confirm that, and of course, you, you all can confirm it. But basically, basically what we have at this point is we have kind of a visual of what we talked about working with. We have a copy of the proposal, which is, it should be in line with everything that I've discussed. I did also reach out to her to address the board's concern about rights to the website.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the answer that I got back from her is, "The town completely owns the website and any domains that I may purchase in their name. They can choose to move it and have any webmaster work on it that they wish to, so nothing would change. However, since I designed the website and will be developing all of the code to run the site, all I've ever asked clients that choose to go elsewhere if they do not want me to do it first is to please remove my company name and website link from the bottom of the website. This is because I do not want any site adjustments and/or changes made to the site from that point on to be reflected against my company since I did not make them." She goes on, she goes on to discuss that she doesn't require written contracts from her clients, that essentially, you know, if we said, "Develop the site and then you're going to be our maintenance person," we could do it on Word if we wanted to, but that as she's doing more and more with municipalities, she's realizing that that is, that, that's something that, you know, more and more municipalities and schools and whatnot want to do. So it's not a problem, it's not something she's requiring, we're not going to be locked in for a period of time.
I, whether we're locked in or not, wouldn't it be nice to have an outline? Because members of the board will change.
Oh, absolutely.
And people will have no recollection of this conversation three boards from now.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll be thinking, "Well, she should be doing this and she should be doing that." And that may not have been the original agreement. So having something in...
A scope, a scope of...
Responsibilities or works or duties.
Services, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would, how are we going to go about coming to agreement on the actual content and display or format of the website itself?
Are you talking like the visual display and... Are you talking like the visual display and content? I mean, I think the first thing that we would do, in my vision, is to provide some feedback about, you know, what she's done on Photoshop here. What do we, you know, as a board, what do we think about? And then as far as the content goes, I mean, the content really, depending on, I mean, that's, that can become a very detailed question. But I think what we're looking at as far as the content goes is what pages are we looking to see created and how do we want to see them updated? From the detailed discussions that I've had with her as far as updates goes, she's willing to do whatever updates we're looking for as time goes and obviously build accordingly. Or the other piece that we've discussed is rather than us having our employees send all the info for a meeting, so to speak, to her and then pay her to do it in the same amount of time.
But I think we've gone beyond the question.
Okay.
I think what Margie was asking, if I understood correctly, was like our, one of the things I like about our webpage as an attorney is one thing says our ordinances and bylaws. So boom, I go right there. That's a design question that goes to what's on the first page.
Gotcha.
Another thing I noticed was it gives a phone number. But honestly, the town doesn't have a specific phone number. The town clerk has a phone number, the town administrator has a phone number, and they're very different roles. So there may be some key roles that we want to identify. And these are the kinds of design questions I thought Margie was-
Well, that's what I'm alluding to. And just to fill you in, well, I'm slightly confused now about where we are with the purchasing procurement process for this service. I just, at some point, we just really- And secondly, is the group input factor with the elected officials here or to have a couple of people that actually, we sit down and have working sessions with this developer? Because I don't want one person to just go out and design it de facto. It's, that's what it is.
Oh, no, and I've talked to her about coming down and talking to the different officials and understanding what their needs are. And she's more than, not only willing, but prepared to do that piece of it.
Yeah.
And one of the other concerns that I did address concerning content was there was the concern about what are we going to do with trying to get lister cards up on the website? So I did have the opportunity to speak to Larry Johnson about that just to see what the listers' perspective on that is to start. And the listers are not only willing to provide any help they can with that, but they want that to happen. Because of their limited hours, they want the people in the town to be able to access that information quickly. So I think, I think that as we partner with the different people here in the town, I think we all have the same vision of wanting more information available for the people in the town. I think you bring up a good point, Margie and Lon, in that, you know, what seems like a simple thing such as our phone number, you know, maybe isn't really such a simple thing. Because that phone, you know, and I didn't check, I mean, I just saw this right now. Is that Judy's number? Is that Margie's number? Well, I know it's not your number. But, you know, whose number is it? Who are we directing people to? So I think that's a, you know, a really good question. I think the only, you know, the only way that I know of to go through that in this is to kind of go through, you know, the building phases and take feedback, take pages, and look at it and say, "Okay, this is what works. This is what's good. This is what we need to tweak." Because I don't think that we're ever going to conceptually be able to sit here as a group of elected and appointed officials and say, "This is exactly what a website should look like." I think we're almost going to have to look at pieces of it and build upon it. So there's a lot of-
And the other thing that's, you know, that's obviously true, that if we start out, let's say this is the webpage that we start with today, and next week we realize that there's something grievously wrong with it, or we just decide that we've, there was some critical or important element that we really need to have linked off the main page. That can be done in minutes.
Absolutely.
You know, this is, it's a very fluid operation, you know. So it isn't, it isn't, you know, a static, you know, something that, once it's there, there's, that it takes an act of Congress to make it different.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So let's do this then. We're going to, for the next meeting, we're going to have a proposed price for getting the website up and running. And we can talk about what the development steps are going to be and whether the dollar amount is what we want to spend. And then we can vote on going to the next step because we can't determine all the planning tonight. But it seems like there's only so much we can ask her to do for free. And we're having a lot of conversation with her about what she can do and all that. And I think-
I asked her to be available for Monday night.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I promised her it would be a small meeting.
Less than 100 people are pre-int-
Less than 100 people. But she's very, she represents herself very well.
Okay.
She's full of energy. And I did want to just say, within the, my limited scope of understanding, having done a little background work with Bill Pennybaker and Jennifer Birick and other people that had been thinking about websites and what they, what we could use to best service our needs, it's always come down to whether we should go with a, kind of like the blogging approach, which is WordPress as an example direction, or to go in this particular direction, which is more code-oriented. And to me, that was Greek. I had to say, "Well, please give an example about how that impacts us on a daily basis."
You've just stepped into a whole area.
Yeah, yeah. So there is a difference. But this, taking this avenue purportedly would set us up better over time in that WordPress is an open source, has open source updates that you need to download yourselves to help you do the uploads, I mean, to the revisions to your site that you want to do. So you become limited over time till, you have to wait for open source developers to download their little widgets or whatever they call them to enable you to make the changes to your own website that you really want to do. Whereas somebody that's writing the code in the background and are there as professionals, they can-
Keep it current.
In a gross, grossly summarized fashion, keep us on the straight and narrow, but still enable us to be able to edit and update certain aspects of a page.
That's important, yeah.
A portion, but not, not the overall layout, let's say.
The programmer doesn't have to attach the meeting minutes?
No.
No, we'll be able to do updates like that. Because I asked, let's just say we have a little billboard we want to keep running if the town clerk wants to have announcements or if I need to have announcements. If we have road closures that are coming up in an emergency, we need to have an interactive capacity whereas-
Her, Carl Corman's haiku for the day.
Right. Anyway, so you can ask all your questions next week, I think.
Yeah, the only question that I haven't gotten an answer from her on yet as far as content was talking about this interactive piece, was trying to determine if we can limit who can access different pages so that, you know, we could give certain accesses to one person, certain accesses to another, so that if we, you know, if we give somebody access thinking they're only going to do something on one page, that they can accidentally delete all of our minutes for the year or something like that.
Well, the rec committee posts an announcement and inadvertently erases minutes from the select board section.
Exactly.
Just by mistake, yeah.
So she was going to play around with a few things and kind of give me an answer on what we can do there. But I think, aside from that, I hope I got all the questions everybody asked me to answer. And the one thing that I'd just like to say for the people of the town, because we haven't really talked about this on camera a lot. The goal with doing some revamps on the website and going down a new avenue here is to help us communicate some more information in a more timely fashion than we can under our current system. And we've addressed some issues before about, you know, how in a small town with limited hours in Coal Hall, we can't always be here at every hour. People need something. And the more we can do with the website, the more information we can make available to the people in the town.
Great. The next item, Bill, did you have anything else for tonight under other business?
I did, Lon, and, you know, I just want to make a note of this. I'm sorry, I did not realize that we were flipping the 11th and the 18th. And I'm fine to be here on the 11th and honestly, schedule-wise-
We haven't, we haven't really done it. It was just, it's all tentative.
Okay.
So it's up to the board if we meet on the 18th.
Okay, were you going to bring that up later? Okay, then I'll discuss that.
But we can do it right now. That's fine.
Okay, the only, you know, personally, honestly, meeting on the 11th personally is better for me because I'm off on the 18th, so I don't have to come into a meeting on my day off. But the one, the one concern I had with that flip is that we just had another national holiday, Martin Luther King Day, where we still met on that holiday. And I'm just concerned about the message that we could be inadvertently sending, even though I know it's not reflective of how any of us feel, but how it could be interpreted by any one or multiple individuals in the community if we were to meet on that holiday, but not on President's Day.
What's the pleasure? Do people want to meet the 18th?
I think you need it in your select board procedures. We'll do a little amendment in March.
Okay. But for this, this February, since it's discretionary, what's the pleasure of the board? Bill's mentioned he'd prefer to meet on the holiday.
No, I think he's saying he'd prefer to meet on the 11th, actually.
Well, I'm saying personally, meeting on the 11th works better, but I'm concerned about the message of not meeting on the holiday.
Well, I guess at this point you have to make a choice.
I have to make a- I have to make a choice?
Yes.
Okay, if I have to make a choice, I will say the 18th, but I'm flexible.
Craig?
Doesn't make any difference to me. I can meet either one.
Okay, Karen?
I can meet either one, but I will say my preference is to not have to meet on a holiday. It's-
That's my preference.
Yeah, I mean, people that have family that are taking the week off for school or, you know, I think we can always have cat TV, you know, I shouldn't say always, but often. They're very accommodative and can switch certain schedules. I don't like taking them out on a holiday evening. The 18th, frankly, we will be having people here for that long weekend at home. So it means my having to leave them. So my preference would be to meet actually on the 11th.
Well, Martin Luther King Day, I did not anticipate it because I was, we were pretty all busy wrapping stuff up. And it didn't occur to me till Margie mentioned our regular meeting was on a holiday that we were dragging the town administrator out to a meeting on our day off. And then I thought, you know, that just is not right, you know. We're volunteers, that's one thing, but if we give employees a day off, they should have the day off. And it's not a day off if you have to get ready for a meeting and come to a meeting. So my view is we're not sticking with the personnel policy if we're required to come in on the holiday.
I agree with something Margie said, which is that we can take a look at the policies and procedures. You know, right now, we're first and third Mondays. Maybe it gets changed-
All holidays fall on a Monday.
Exactly. That's the problem. That, you know, if it's a holiday, then there'll be an alternative meeting, perhaps.
I think maybe simply you just know you're going to meet the next night, Tuesday, following a long weekend or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that we can address that in March.
Right, put it in the rules of procedure. Because we send that to the banner and that's our notice of our regular meetings. Okay. Anything else, Bill?
No, that's all I have.
So are we meeting the 11th or the 18th?
We're meeting Monday, the 11th and the 25th.
Okay.
Greg, other business?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Just as a follow-up to, we had a number of people apply for positions with the DRB. We recently made some, you know, we made some, after interviewing them, we made some decisions, appointed people. I'm wondering if we did any follow-up, like, just as in an appointment letter, you know, letting people know, just a follow-up thank you and-
I sent an email that night.
To all parties?
To all the, I sent an email to the chair of the DRB, letting her know so that she could alert her board. And I also sent an email to all the applicants.
All the, good, perfect.
Just letting, I just sent them a letter, letting them know the new structure of the DRB, thanked them all for-
Applying.
For applying.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't lost because that, an outpouring of that, we haven't seen that in a while. And it was really, I found it very encouraging and-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't tell the board, but as liaison to DRB, I just kind of took it upon myself.
Perfect, that's all I wanted to know is that we did it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else, Greg?
Nope, that's it.
Great. Karen?
Just to fill up, February 11th, perhaps. We had talked about having a water board meeting. We haven't had one for some time. We're expecting that we'll have a budget to present to the board. So I was wondering if, you know, we're trying to get into a sort of the frame of mind where the board actually approves, because the select board, for those who may not be aware, is actually the water board also. We take off one hat and put on another. And the water budget sometimes gets shifted time-wise because of all of the work that is involved in the town budget. But we're really pretty close to having that budget nailed down. And I think if the board could approve it, you know, before town meeting, that would be a nice thing, would be back sort of in sync with the town budget because we are in the same fiscal year. So it seems to make sense for the superintendent, Margie, you know, for all of us to have an idea where we're going with the water. So I would propose that we can get that budget out to the board by the weekend for your review. And if, depending upon when we're planning to meet, you know, I wouldn't guess that it would take more than a half an hour to go through the budget.
Okay, let's, if everybody agrees, we'll start the water board at 6:00. And then it's, and although we've had a pretty good conversation every year, it takes a little short of an hour, so we could plan on the regular meeting starting immediately thereafter, but-
I'm just feeling if we can get everything out to you ahead of time.
Yeah, so I-
There's not a real major-
No.
Other than we will have a personnel change, sadly, a year from hence.
But we also, you know, Joe gets a chance to talk about his plans for what improvements he want to do and bringing the board back up to date on where things stand. So an hour flies by.
Okay.
We had a really interesting, just very briefly, meeting with our treasurer about presentation of the financial statements for the water department and it was very educational in how, what we should be trying to evolve with for an enterprise fund as far as how to present information. Yeah, so that'll be another evolving aspect of what we are going to be working on.
Would the transfer station then become an enterprise fund?
Good question.
Okay.
No.
I don't think so.
No, it doesn't qualify because of the property tax subsidy.
Right.
But I don't know if that's why. I mean, I, maybe I should take that back. Because there is the property tax subsidy, I'm not sure it equates to solely a user-fee-based enterprise, which is what we're trying to do with water.
Which is, there's no underwriting.
That's right.
Just cash flow. But whatever the town advances for the water department's always in anticipation of water bills being collected.
You've got your due-tos and froms.
Right.
Yep.
But that's all the town does for the water department is cash flow. Okay. Anything else, Karen?
Just that I'd like to, and you know, maybe Billy, I know that you've expressed an interest in this. We've had a lot of conversations around the dog licenses. And I did have a call from, a couple of weeks ago, from a resident and it was related to a situation we had discussed as a board. And the warden had to take some action. But one of the things that came up in the course of licenses and follow-up, I talked, I, she really does seem to be the person that needs to follow up once we get the- she really does seem to be the person that needs to follow up, once we get the list from Judy at the end of the year. And she had gone down the list, and one of the questions that came up was, what do I charge, what are we charging people that, for instance, went all last year without having a dog license, and have now come forward, and they're licensing their dog, and, you know, there's a fine for having not licensed last year? What is it? So they've, you know, been collecting $25, but it has once again brought up this question of taking a look at our ordinance.
Right.
And seeing if there are things which, not if, we know that there are situations that we need to more clearly define what the process is. So I'm just, I'm wondering if that's something that you'd be willing to work with?
Yeah, absolutely. Margie, we had gone over some questions in the ordinance that I know you were planning on, I think, reaching out to BLCT on...
Well, I think we need to have a special meeting, or a, it would be nice to revisit animal control as a group, I think.
But did we get answers to any of them?
I don't even have answers for that yet. Though, when we went over the ordinance, and I've been going over this in my mind, because partly due to the fact that we're looking at what we're being invoiced from a cost control standpoint, but also whether or not we're paying wages, whether we should be paying wages, or really, it should be a 1099 relationship, and solely, and therefore that we could be bidding this, let's say, every three years. And I'm coming down, I'm coming closer to the opinion of how we could do that, that I, the way our current animal control officer bills, and I don't want to make this belated, I mean, a long run-out discussion, it's just been difficult to see what we're really, what's going on. So I think that's simplifying, in my mind, and I will help the board simplify that, and maybe we could, when we look at the ordinance, then we can take a look at whether we want a more competitive situation as, for procurement of services.
Do you think, you know, as we're looking at this, since I think some of those questions were kind of key in how we were gonna look at this, do you think maybe we could try to figure out some of those answers, and then the week of President's Day, since I'm off that week, I can come down during the week at some point and go over some of that stuff with you? Or...
Yeah, so that maybe we get back to it as a board after town meeting.
Yeah, 'cause what I'm thinking is, there are some loose ends with what we had with the ordinance, that we could sit here and discuss them, but until we have factual answers, we're not gonna get anywhere with it.
Absolutely. That's why I'm suggesting as a smaller group, with, you know...
Yeah, so I'm thinking maybe if we could spend a little time during that week, when I'm off from work, you know, not a ton of time, 'cause I don't want to spend a whole ton of time, but just trying to get some of that stuff nailed down that way.
Yeah, so just winter vacation week.
Yeah, so it's, let's say, between the 19th and the 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay, that's between Tuesday and Friday? You know, let me know a day that...
Towards the latter part of the week would be better.
Okay.
And let's talk.
Yeah, we can talk outside of the meeting.
This is the one governance issue that's really thorny.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, yeah. And it is a significant revenue stream.
Mm-hmm.
But, and it really affects everybody in town.
Well, it does. It really impacts, you know, the folks that are trying to do it right, and end up subsidizing those that don't. And we've got this enforcement issue that, you know, sometimes it really just is a matter of going to the door of these folks' homes and saying, you know, "Listen, you've got it, you've got to do this." And it works. I mean, in many cases, it does. People feel badly, or they're neglected, or whatever, and so it's, a lot of it is that follow-through. So, anyway, those are my two things that I wanted to...
Yeah, and it's, the one thing, if you don't sort of re-look at a relationship, but just sort of can settle into patterns that aren't very good for either party, and, so, yeah, I think it needs to be taken up. Anything else, Karen?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board in terms of the open DRB alternate position? You've just, the reason I bring it up is, it seems that you've just done all these interviews, and you have folks who are interested in serving have one alternate seat open. If you did it now, based on the people who had applied already, you don't have to go through the whole interview process all over again, and if they're still interested in serving, and we could poll everybody during the week to see if they'd be interested in the alternate position that's open. And if not, then, you know, it's back to the drawing board, and you'd take it up with appointments after March 5th. But if people are, and the board's interested in appointing them, then you could go ahead and make the appointment now, based on the work you've already done.
I think that would be my preference, is that we find out from those, you've contacted, you've just contacted them all, who would be...
Retract that statement.
Well, you know, I think, ask them, would they be interested in the alternate position?
Do you want me to only reach out to the people who we interviewed, or do you want me to reach out to everybody?
I think I would reach out to everybody that was...
Everybody that applied?
Yep. That's what I would recommend.
I feel the same way.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
This is probably a moot point, but technically Jennifer Vierich was an applicant, but obviously she just resigned, so I'm just gonna clarify that it would make no sense to reach out to her.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Okay. Seemed very obvious, I just wanted to, yeah, weigh up.
And with Kathy here, can I clarify? So Kathy, you would withdraw on your application?
I have a question. The alternate position that Jennifer's sitting expires in March, so how appropriate is that? It was a one-year term, and it ends up in March, so when you're talking, what do you want to do about, you know, that doesn't make sense either.
With the other alternate, yeah, with the other alternate position that we just filled, we defined that term through 2014. So I would imagine we could do the same thing.
The statute allows the select board to set the term for public officials, and last year, when we appointed the alternates, we appointed them for a one-year term.
The other, I was just gonna say that the other option that we didn't discuss here is, we do have one other seat that could potentially, or that's due to expire. The other option that we could look at, you know, depending on how these emails out this week go, is that we could advertise for the positions that would open in March early.
Yeah, we typically do.
So that we have the applicants...
We typically put out a notice for all of the appointments that are expiring in 2014 now, so that people's request for appointment come in, so we're not starting the process...
In March.
In March.
Gotcha.
And sort of behind the eight-ball timing-wise.
Gotcha.
So that's something that Margie's done in the past two or three years.
Okay. Craig, I didn't mean to cut you off there, I'm sorry.
No, so that's part of the routine, or we've tried to make it routine.
I was gonna redo that, so it's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Karen?
No, but I just think we ought to just clarify what you just said, which is, are we, well, we'll listen to what Billy and Craig want to do in terms of the alternate, I'm sorry.
But I would concur that if we were to poll the prior applicants, see if they're interested, and, you know, based on that, if we appointed someone prior to town meeting, that we would do that appointment, just, it would be through town meeting of next year. So it wouldn't be a one-month appointment, it would be a 13-month appointment, or 12 and a half months, or whatever it would be. Thank you, though, that is a good question.
And if the board decided to do a longer term for an alternate, they could.
Yeah.
Just describe what discretion they have. And the reason the terms were changed was David Mance had brought to our attention at a meeting that the rotation of DRB members was such that they were having big turnovers in some years, and that we should really take a look at the rotation. So one of the things that we accomplished, that we should have accomplished when we downsized the DRB from seven members to five, was what the terms were gonna be. And so we looked at the schedule and the appointments, and basically tried to have no more than two DRB members turnover in any given year. So it's 2-2-1, 2-2-1, and everybody's on a three-year...
Rotation.
Rotation now. We had two-year seats and three-year seats, and we're just having, every so many years, too many members turn over all at once. And so that's why we reorganized the rotation of seats by setting terms for the people who were appointed. So we'll put on the agenda the issue of appointment to the alternate seat. Kathy, if you've changed your mind, just let Margie know. And then we're gonna have on the agenda, just to give you a heads-up as to whether or not appointed officials should take the oath of office. Every member of the select board signs the oath, the town clerks. I'm just giving you a heads-up, the reason it's going on the agenda is because unless the select board adopts a policy, appointed officials are not required to take an oath of office. And I think we ought to decide if we're gonna have a policy or not. I think there's something about signing an oath of office that adds a little formality to the appointment process.
Agreed.
And for Planning Commission and DRB, we ought to consider having them take the oath of office. The other item is, we're talking about the informational mailer. We don't have lots of time to get one out, so I wanted to show you all a shortcut to proposed mailing. If anybody wants to take a look at this, it's about the town garage.
Make sure, let's just make sure board, at least board members get copies.
I have, I have it electronically, so...
Oh, yeah, I have it.
Okay.
Happy to provide it to the public.
Just take one of those that are already clustered together.
Right here, Kathy, this is the whole set.
That's the whole package. Tom, if you want to take a look? Is anybody else?
Jerry?
Jerry? Whoops. So what we need to do, since not everybody gets out to meetings, and because the town report is a big document, with lots of different authors talking about everything to do with town governance, we've discussed it, a board sending out an informational flyer. And Jeff Goldstone, who's with MSK, he's the architect with MSK, put together a page and a quarter summary, or a page and an eighth summary of the entire project. And I was thinking that if we combine that with just the information piece that we've put in the town report, which says bond vote March 5th, less the third page where it talks about the estimated annual costs, and then add to it just a spreadsheet, it doesn't have the lines that make it easier to read, but these figures are based on the treasurer's information received from, I believe it was the bond bank or bond council.
That's right.
And it's only an estimate because the interest rate may vary during the 20-year life of the bond, and so we were given some projected interest rates. And on the left-hand side shows the year of the payment, and the payment is actually broken into two pieces. One payment in November of the principal that's due $75,000 plus the accrued interest, and the second payment six months later, which is only interest. And I've combined those into what I call the annual bond payment. I mean, it's what we're paying out for the particular fiscal year, really.
Can I ask one quick question? You said that the bond, the bond rate can change over the 20-year?
That's what I was wondering about.
That's, that's what I saw on the worksheet.
I mean, the only time I've known that to happen is when you can negotiate a lower rate, when rates go down.
On bonds?
Yeah, I mean, I know that they did it for the North Bennington Bond, they were able to negotiate a lower bond, but there never was a concern...
A variable rate?
That it would be variable, it would be a flat-rate bond.
Well, if you look at...
From Bill Fisk's memo?
Bill Fisk's memo.
Well, Bill's was not, we talked to Bob Giroux, he didn't quite...
Giroux?
Giroux, yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't...
What's his thinking about that?
Some of Bill's information was not...
Needed some work?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Accurate, in terms of what Bob had said.
Okay. So that...
I mean, the only, the only, the only difference is that right now, we don't have a firm bond rate. Once we negotiate a bond rate, at the point that we're going out for it, you know, my understanding is that that's a flat rate then. It's a fixed rate, not a flat, but it's a fixed rate. Right now, we don't know whether it would be 3.1 or 3.3, or at the point that if the town determines that they think we should move forward with this, then we go to the bond bank and say, "Okay, we've had a positive vote, we now are in the position of going out for this bond," so...
Okay.
That's the point at which the rate will be determined, when they get ready to sell these bonds.
Okay. Does this have an increasing variable rate that I work from? So this worksheet that I put together this morning, all the calculations will change if I just change the annual payment. So if...
Did you not get that, and I didn't, I don't think I brought it with me? We had gotten from Bob an amortization schedule.
That I got this, municipal bond bank, but this...
And where are you showing a variable interest rate?
Estimated interest rates. And here, the interest rate is changing every year, it's going up a little bit, in the tenths of a percent over the life of the bond. It's starting off at 1.458%, and on the 20th year, it's 3.599%.
Okay, so, but maybe when, because when Bob quoted us, you know, we said, "What's the rate at this point?" And he said 3.2. Maybe, maybe he's averaging, maybe, you know, I don't...
Every year, it's a different rate.
Right, but he's never quoted us any 1.45. I mean, that's...
And this is from the municipal bond bank.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where I got the, that's where this data comes from, is from the bond bank numbers.
Yeah.
So, so these annual payments were just basically adding the two payments calculated by the bond bank, the one in November and the second one in May, which is interest-only.
Right, right.
Then I used $42,000...